I think this is, this is what's gonna be for tonight. Hmm, give me one second, guys. So I'm putting in a different, um. Let me see two different functions to make sure it's easy for me to see everything. So, um. Lou, can you step in as Vice Mayor for right now and read the agenda for right now? Once I call it to order?
Yep, I can do that.
Can you go ahead and, uh, so I'm calling the meeting to order at seven oh four. Having, um, Luke Chesek present, Jimmy Tarlo, um, and Jared Stoffes as council members and me as mayor. So we have made quorum. So if you could read through the agenda, Lou, it definitely will, will help us move it up, move it, move it forward.
Sure. Um, number one, call to order. Two, review and approval of the agenda. Three, closed session reports. Four, facade improvement project presentation for thirty-two oh one to thirty-two eleven Rhode Island. Five, presentation on storm water management by LID and EcoSite. Six, update of ARPA consult consultation firms. Seven, discussion to amend FY twenty-two budget amendment to affrec, to reflect, um, ARPA funding. Eight, discussion on next steps on ARPA community input. Nine, review of legislative calendar for FY twenty-two, and ten, adjournment.
All right.
My name's Madam Mayor. I think we have two sixes. These are the one I printed out. Could you go down to six? Maybe one of them deleted the forty-one twenty-nine. The agenda I had had something on forty-one oh nine twenty-nine street. Was that deleted? I don't see it there. Okay.
Yeah, I had that too. Elena?
Uh, the agenda that we.
The agenda in front of me doesn't need any changes.
So the question is, there was a, the agenda that we printed out had a, an item on a, a DRB recommendation. At forty-one oh twenty-nine, forty-one oh nine twenty-nine street. Is that, I mean, that's fine to delete it. Just, that's the one we printed out.
Okay, so but I'm asking regarding this, this agenda in front of you, is anything missing or anything be, needs to be adjusted?
That's what's missing. If it's, if it's missing on purpose, that's fine.
No, 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 I don't, I, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm having, I'm gonna have to log out. Webex and me are never best friends. I have to sometimes log in more than once. Um.
Mayor, let me, can I, can you hand me the mic for a second? I might be able to help.
Go ahead.
Thanks. Alma, forty-one oh nine twenty-ninth street was, did they need to be, have, did they need to be on the agenda tonight?
Um, well, they needed to be on the agenda for them, in order for them to actually submit their variance request to the county.
Perfect. All right.
That's the reason.
Okay, so let's add that to the agenda, and let's add that as the new number four. So that they can go forth and first, and to the extent they're here, we can get them out of the way. So they'll be.
Yeah.
For the facade improvement.
The final one, it had it, so.
So we'll put it in there, forty-one oh nine twenty-ninth street.
Why don't we make that four A and the facade four B? So we don't have to rename everything?
Perfect. Forty-one oh nine twenty-ninth street is the address. And you can just put DRB recommendation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you. And Jimmy's recommendation was just making that four A and then making the facade improvement four B. Perfect. Thank you, guys.
You would suggest, you would suggest another item. Just let us know where you want to put it.
Yeah, the leaving canopies is not on this agenda, but they're coming into percentage. It shouldn't take no more than ten minutes.
Do you wanna make that four C?
So make that four C and we'll add him, and I'm sending him the link right now as we speak.
I'd like to move the agendas amended. That's all right.
I'll second the motion on the floor to approve the agenda as amended.
Okay, so there's a motion and it's moved and seconded. Any objections to approve the agenda, uh, with the, with the additions? Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you. No objections.
So I'm gonna log on and log back in a Webex, um. And if there's no objection, the agenda will move, uh, as presented. So moving on to item number three. Uh, closed session reports, Dean, that Scott's not here. Mr. Kamali, has he turned in any other closed session reports to you so they could be read or no?
No, unfortunately, no.
I'd like to move that we tabled that to the next session.
Okay, thank you, uh, thank you, Jimmy. Uh, you know, we just, we could just keep it moving on to the next one. Thank you. So next item of the agenda will be. Um, for, for A, forty-one oh nine twenty-nine street, DRB recommendation. We have both, um, Alma and DRB on the line and maybe even the guest. So Alma, can you pitch it in and then, um, Brian, I believe is here from the Simon Review Board?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. Um, both, um, all mayor, council, um, city manager, residents and colleagues. Um, we're here today to present, um, forty-one oh nine twenty-ninth street. Um, the recommendation letter was already, uh, given by the DRB in this case. And here to represent them is, um, our very own Mr. Nedler.
So, hi, everybody. Um, I thought the, I thought the architect was gonna be with us to, uh, answer any of your questions. Um, so there's been a little bit of use of communication evidently. The DRB has already met with them, the owners and the architect. Um, it's fairly straightforward. They have only one rear entrance, which is actually on the side of the house. Um, unfortunately, it's, um, too close to the lot line with today's zoning. And they wanna replace that rickety staircase and also connect it to a new deck on the back. Um, and so the DRB, you know, this is a very practical issue, obviously. Um, they need to have an, an exit from the rear of their house, which is this staircase, um, which will now be attached to a deck. Um, also to take into consideration, you'll see in the letter, is that this is not next to the neighboring house. There's actually a driveway and, and open space. So even though it's gonna be, uh, I think it's like three feet away instead of seven to the lot line. There's no house immediately adjacent that it would impact. So that is, I mean, I think you have the letter. Um, I don't know if there's any more to say about it. It's pretty straightforward as far as the design review board is concerned.
Thank you, Brian. So the recommendation is to approve, um, to approve, correct?
I'm sorry, Mayor.
I'm sorry, Brian. I said the recommendation it is to approve from the behalf of the design review board?
Yes, and so this is unusual situation. I have to also mention usually, um, we're behind the eight ball this time. The architect who has recused himself from, uh, this matter on the DRB, um. Actually realized it was gonna need to go before the, the zoning review board. And so, um, wanted to get the council, the DRB and the councils', um, approval, uh, or recommendation for the variance ahead of time so that when they get there, they don't get postponed like was what usually happens.
No, and, and we definitely appreciate you guys moving forward with it because we're trying to, um, cut time. Um, and so thank you always to the design review board for making sure that you guys take time out of your very busy schedules to make sure you review them and give us the best recommendation. So council, we cannot vote here, but the letter was submitted to all of us, um, approving, uh, the variance. And Alma, there's no concerns on behalf of the city as well, right? You lived through it and it's fine?
Um, it's fine.
Okay, and then we also heard from Brian. So, um, if you have any questions, go ahead and ask them. Uh, let me know when I open up the floor. If not, we could move on to the next item and, and move it forward to a legislative meeting for, um, for a vote. Council, what is your pressure? Just, any questions?
And, no, I think if we can, um, i- if there's consensus on moving forward, let Alma move forward, whatever she needs to do. And then we can do what you said at the legislative meeting and make it formal.
All right.
I agree.
Good, Jared?
Uh, no, I agree.
All right, per for the scene that we have agreed between council, this item will be moved on to the legislative meeting for vote. Um, and now I'm gonna proceed as, as, as you would, uh, with, with this, with the support, okay?
Okay, no problem, Brian.
Thank you, Brian, for being here. We always appreciate having you around.
All righty.
Okay, so, I know, we're gonna keep Brian for five more minutes, right? He goes nowhere. Okay, moving on to the next agenda item. Lou, can you read it, please?
Yep, it's the facade improvement project presentation thirty-two oh one to thirty-two eleven Rhode Island Avenue.
Okay, who do we have here for that presentation?
Uh, so you have me, Ron Hopkins, Director of Economic Development. Hello, Mayor, Council and everyone in attendance this evening.
Thank you, Ron, and can you please, uh, lead this portion of the presentation?
Absolutely. So I'm gonna turn this over to our project manager, uh, which is Ms. Tisa Clark. She's with J D Clark Professional Services, and she will introduce, uh, Neighborhood Design Center. So I'm gonna turn it over to Tisa Clark.
Hello, Tisa.
Good evening, good evening, Madam Mayor and esteemed council. Um, I appreciate the opportunity to present to you this evening. Uh, we in turn, uh, as Ron mentioned, uh, I am Tisa Clark, President and CEO of a local construction consulting and real estate firm here in the county. And I have had the pleasure of working alongside of Mr. Hopkins as well as the businesses and building owners uh, between thirty-two oh one, thirty-two eleven, uh, to gain insight into their ideas. And, uh, and it was very much a collaborative effort between myself, uh, as well as the Neighborhood Design Center, which I'm sure, uh, you have heard of them, a local nonprofit, uh, that does a lot of work in this space. Uh, as we embarked upon the task of creating a design, uh, with full collaboration of the business owners uh, and building owners of this one section, uh, of the block associated with the facade design, uh, program. Uh, at this time, I would like to turn it over to Ally, um, O'Neil, Sophie Morley, who are with the design center where they in turn will present, um, to you the collaborative design, uh, for, uh, the program. Sophie?
Good evening, everyone. Can you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Sophie.
And, great, and can you also see my screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. Great, well, I'm going to, um, to walk everyone through a report that we've created um, of the conceptual dark designs, uh, for the facade improvements along Rhode Island Avenue. Um. And just to kind of give you an overview, um, as Tisa, Ms. Clark said, um, we've been working in collaboration with the city and with, uh, with Ms. Clark and the business owners uh, to develop a series of, um, designs for the improvements to the facades. Now, uh, the designs that we're gonna show today, they seek to embrace the culture and creativity of the city and the arts district. And as well as providing much needed revitalization, um, as part of one. And we also want to note that facade improvements would adhere to the guidelines and recommendations outlined in the city of Mount Rainier mixed-use town center and zone development. And so you can see from this first page here, um, so we have some inspiration of existing buildings. And we also have some images, some wonderful images of the process, which was very in-depth with business owners. Um, and, um, and, and very collaborative. And you'll see down here at the bottom, we have a elevation, which shows kind of a, an overview of those proposed changes. And, and that's quite small because the elevation's very long. Um, but we'll go into more detail, um, of what we're proposing for each business as we go through this. Um, and what we have to begin with is some, um, some concept views. Um, oh, sorry, we've got the site plan next. Uh, just showing you there, we've got, um, route one here. And this is just showing the businesses that are part of this phase of the facade improvement there. And we then have some views that are starting to, uh, to show you all, uh, our vision. Our vision for these changes. And this view, uh, starts to show, uh, the salon here, the Mount Rainier Police Station and Panlord's Bakery. And we also have shown in some of these views some, uh, additional enhancements in terms of landscape. We're really trying to show you the vision to here. And, and as I said, we'll go into more detail, um, for each business. But some of the features that you might kind of up on here are some pedestrian signage, um, that we're introducing as well as the, um, the other features such as new signs, um, planters, um, some new furniture, um, and also some new lighting, um, as well as, as painting and, and kind of some applied, uh, film as well.
Are you able to make it larger, Sophie? The picture actually, the picture larger on your screen?
Um. I'm, it's showing my.
If you maximize your screen, it's better. I was able to get it bigger.
Okay. So individually maximize your screen, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I just did that and it's pretty big.
All right, okay.
Yeah, I think, um, I think it's maxed out on my screen without kind of going into the document and zooming in. I don't.
All right, it's all good, it's all good. I won't interrupt.
Okay, no problem. And so this is, uh, this is another view looking the other way. And so we're picking up, uh, the Potomac Fish House, um, looking at kind of signage there, but also some of the other businesses. Um, and really starting to try and, um, take our designs and, and bring them to life there. And, um, what I'll do, and, um, feel free to drop questions into the chat. But I'll go through this presentation and then we'll have time at the end to, um, to take some of the questions. So again, these are, these are some things that we've created. Um, and then I'm going to kind of introduce, uh, the palette that we've been working with. So some of the different materials that we're thinking about for, uh, both the signs, um, and the furniture type thing. Um. So the signs, um, that we have here, um, are some of the kind of case studies we've been looking at. And, um, you can see that we've got signs that kind of are applied as a film to, um, to windows. And we have assignments like a light box. Um, number three is the most typical sign that we're gonna use, um, which is a, which is cutout letters, um, on a backdrop. Number four is, uh, the pedestrian signage that you would have picked up and seen in those views. And, and number five is, um, more of a light box sign as well. So this is kind of the range, but number three is the most typical. And so we really tried to balance, um, kind of individual wants and needs, but also to have a really kind of cohesive strategy, um, in terms of color and choice and options. Um, so this is why we've kind of created this palette, um, option there. So this is the signage types. And we also have different types of lighting. Um, so some folks have kind of opted for more of a gooseneck light that you could see, um, in number four here. Some businesses, um, sort of sconce light here, depending on the kind of aesthetic that they've gone for. We also have some lights that, um, are kind of uplighting signs, um, as well as, uh, some other kind of methods of, of window lighting. We recognize that there's a few, um, businesses that have strip lights in their windows. And we really wanted to, um, to support them to kind of update and enhance what they already had. And we're also looking at some street furniture to introduce as well. And these are some of the options that we've been looking at. Again, we're kind of thinking, um, things need to be robust, um, but also kind of aspirational. Um, and the, some of the options that we're looking at. We also heard from businesses, you know, some folks might need to bring in furniture at night. So it has to be robust, but also easily movable, um, and, um, kind of adaptable like that. Uh, and then some planters. So again, we're kind of thinking about a series of different plants. I think, um, had discussions, um, about who maintains and who looks after the planters as well. And that's gonna be coming for, that's gonna be kind of, um, something that needs to be, uh, strategized on. Um, but we really want to kind of have a. But we really want to kind of have a planting palette that also speaks to the native plants in the area and kind of working with folks on those plant choices as well. So I'm just going to go through one by one the businesses now and kind of just pick out a couple of the kind of the key things that we're looking at for each business. And so the first one is Party Time, and we're replacing their sign. That's going to be more of a, the letters are going to be lit in that sign. We looked at some enhancements in terms of thinking around the theme of Party Time, thinking about these enhancements here, which will be kind of part of that sign. And the planters, you can see here. And then also what you'll see as we kind of go through is some images on some windows. And so those images are a film that covers the window, but still allows light to be in. And these images that you see here are placeholders. And so that would be decided and finalized with this. But you can see these images are kind of speaking to the the concept of Party Time. And you can see here the pedestrian sign as well. And again, that will be kind of replicated on every page. And the pedestrian sign is something designed that would be consistent for every business, but every business would have their name on there. So moving to Ed and Wyon Co Salon, we already have a very nice new sign there. So really, we're just trying to enhance that with some lighting, pedestrian signage, and also additional planters. You can see here, we're also utilizing the doors to provide some attention about the businesses. And we're doing that kind of across multiple businesses. So moving on to the Mount Rainier Police Station, we actually have two options for this. This is one option where we're painting the existing. We're leaving the tiles as is. And we're also introducing that film to the windows with images from the town focused on kind of community images, a little bit like the images that were put into the lofts recently. And so kind of key things to pick out here are some of the lighting, the gooseneck lights, planters, and then also the flag here. And then this is the second option. This is with mainly kind of some render on the facade, the same lights, and then thinking about a stone effect covering the tiles. And again, this was developed in post consultation with the chief. And then moving on to Panlord's Bakery, we're again doing a fair amount of kind of painting. I think there's some support needed to work on the shutters here. And we're proposing some film over the right-hand side there because that's the storage and where the ovens are. We also are showing a placeholder for a building wrap on that second floor, which is an idea that, that a thing. And also the lighting here is actually going to be an uplight for the sign and then some downlighters overhang. I actually, I can't see, I can see that there are some questions, but I can't actually see the chat right now because I'm sharing my screen.
Sophie, I've got the chat, don't worry. I'll holler if there's any questions, don't worry at all.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so moving on to the Medi Cafe and Medi Market. This was a challenge because it's three businesses and we really wanted to kind of give them a bit of distinction so you could see that they were three different businesses. So we've done kind of three different colors. We're using gooseneck lights there. We're kind of streamlining their window, their windows there. So kind of having blue for Medi Cafe and red for Medi Market. And of course, the pedestrian signage. And again, we're looking at this building as an opportunity to have a building wrap as well. So Aladdin Sizzler and America's Custom Print have the same building owner. And again, we're working closely with the businesses and the building owner. And here, we're actually going to introduce some warnings that you can see kind of above the windows. We are going to provide signage there and completely kind of overhaul their vinyl on their windows, as well as, you can see on the left-hand side, another opportunity to have the film over the windows, noting that this area in Aladdin Sizzler is actually the kind of back of house area again. And again, we thought right now that's a placeholder. And just to note here again, the new numbers on the door. I think what we noticed when we walked down the street, there was a real inconsistency with where numbers and information were placed. So we've really tried to, in each scenario, kind of streamline that and ensure that there's some consistency there. So we're getting through two properties left. So Potomac Fish House and Deli. Worked with them very closely and Tisa worked with the business owner very closely to kind of work out what's appropriate there. They would like a larger sign, but very similar sign to what they have already with a few adjustments. We redesigned the fish, we replaced the crab with a lobster. We've added some other enhancements with the gooseneck lights and the planters. And then also, its existing awning is going to get a paint as well. And so, you know, it's going to be similar, but it's going to be a real refresh. Again, with the pedestrian sign there. And then moving on to the end building, we have kind of worked on a color scheme that actually was inspired by the brick on the upper floors. We noticed that that brick was really kind of these vibrant colors. So we took inspiration for that. We've given each business a different color, recognizing that some of these properties are not occupied right now, but working closely with the folks at Hair Braiding by Zaki and New Nails and Spa to work with them, which, you know, will inform what the businesses do. But we've actually here added the numbers at the top here kind of overhang. Their main signage is going to be in their windows and it's going to be decals. We're going to have lighting over the doors and their information on the doors, as well as some planters there and the pedestrian signage. And that's just a zoomed in, zoomed in, see. Lighting here, kind of really lovely colors and the planters. And we really think that's going to have a great impact on that building. And I think that's the, that's the last slide. So should we?
So Sophie, I'll take it from here, thank you so much. And so there is a question that just got added by Brian. Will the security bars remain? So in some cases, the security bars will stay. In other cases, they will be removed. So for example, New Nails and Spa, she's very open to her bars being removed from her windows. And so from a reuse and sustainability perspective, the actual iron is actually detailed, very lovely. And so being as though it's in three panels, we will actually take the three sections, separate them and create a shutter type look with those existing metal that's there on the side of her windows to kind of give, again, another aesthetic, but yet architectural view that's very pleasing. So some of the business owners were okay with removing some of their security bars and some of them were not. I just want to make sure that I emphasize how collaborative this effort was. We've had multiple meetings where we literally walked the street. We in turn met with the building as well as business owners because in some cases, it's a different building owner than what business is there. So we wanted to ensure that we met the needs of the business. We met the needs of the building owner in case of turnover. But then we also created a standard in which by the city can now have a palette that becomes the standard for any new businesses coming in. So when we looked at the palettes of the lighting fixtures and the signage, and particularly the pedestrian signs, as you notice, every pedestrian sign was the same. It's the Mount Rainier new sign that will be there erect from the building. And it has the Mount Rainier logo on it. And that will be something that will be common as you look up and down the street when you're walking. When new businesses come in, the city will be able to present to them a design palette of if you're going to have signage, this is the standard in which we have. If you're going to select lighting for the exterior of your building, here are your options that you can select from. And as far as the signage, this is the signage that will be from a pedestrian perspective. So we took all of those things into considerations, also showed the business owners once we took all of their feedback and presented them with options. And so they had an opportunity to pick, if you will. I remember the conversation with Neil over at Party Time. It was like, oh, I like this of option one, but I like these of option two, can we merge them? So it was a very, very collaborative effort that we used. Also with the landscaping that we're proposing on that initial conceptual, some of the landscaping that you see as far as the tree, street trees, and some of the plantings around those street trees, those are just for aesthetic only. Our budget is very, very limited in regards to what we can do. And we're hoping that we can tap into some of our other nonprofits that we have, Chesapeake Bay Trust, that we can tap into other resources, State State Highway, to help us with the sidewalk as there are some trip hazards there and look at future phases of how we can continue to move toward the MUTC design of overall aesthetically, addressing kind of in phases, if you will, to give a true walkable street. And with the furniture of those restaurants, they were very, very excited about having an opportunity that someone could come in and purchase, you know, purchase food, purchase beverages, and be able to sit out front of their establishment. And again, with us still being in this pandemic mode and variant and such, it definitely creates a safer environment and helps them drive customers to their stores, which of course increases revenue, which of course we know that the end result of that from a tax base perspective. So just wanted to kind of, you know, wrap that around. Also with the images that Sophie spoke about, the placeholders, these would be varying photographs, photographs that the city would have copyright ownership of. We would leverage the photographs to be representative of the business. So as Sophie mentioned, when it comes to Party Time, the photos would be those of, you know, tasteful parties, tasteful fun times. When we look at the police department, it would be police engagement. So things where the police department have engaged with the residents of the city. And so those would be images. And so it allows for, in Party Time's case, there's one window in particular that you can actually see their cash register from outside on the sidewalk. So it would give them a sense of privacy there, but still is very much seen from the other side. So they can clearly see out. But again, it's something aesthetically pleasing as you're walking up and down, as you're driving up and down. And so at this time, if there are any questions, we definitely can entertain that from Council and Madam Mayor.
So thank you, Tisa. Thank you Neighborhood Design, Ron as well for all the work put into this. We're communicating directly with the owners. So I'm going to open the floor first to Council. Council members, I see Jimmy's hands raised. Jimmy, we're going to go with one then. So we got Jimmy, Luke, followed by Jared. Go ahead, Jimmy. And if you're not speaking, can I please ask for you guys to shut your mics down, please? Jimmy, you are mute.
Following your direction. Thank you. It's a great presentation. I'd like Ron at some point, just to kind of mention to the people in public, where is the money coming from? Let me just get my three questions in then. Where is the money coming from for this? How much is it in? And two, the timeline? And three, my one comment I'd like to make is that, I mean, the designs are very, very nice. I think there's a hundred percent chance that within a year, not every business will be there. So the question is the flexibility of, you know, of changing signs. There's some businesses have been there for, you know, 30 years, 40 years. And there's some businesses that have just come and may not be there in six months. And, you know, spending a lot of resources into a business that may not be there, what's the possibility of kind of, you know, making them flexible that if there's another business there, you know, something else will happen? Thank you, Mayor, for letting me.
Ron, the floor is yours to answer.
Sure. So the money comes from two grants, actually, from DHCD. We have a $50,000 grant from DHC and another $100,000 grant from DHCD and a $50,000 contribution from the City of Mount Rainier. And that's with time and services included. So that's where the money's coming from in the grant. What was your second question?
Timing.
The what?
Timeline.
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 We wanted to start as early as possible, but the grant funding just took a long time. But we did proceed as scheduled. So as soon as the design is approved, then we go in front of MUTC. And then we put out the RFP. And then we have the actual contractor, then we can begin the actual implementation of the facade improvement program. So we're looking, I would say realistically, maybe the beginning of November, end of October, beginning of November. And as far as the longevity of the size on the existing businesses, I'm going to let Tisa and Ally and Sophie address that issue.
So one of the things, thank you, Ron. So one of the things that we thought about was just that, the flexibility and creating this standard for the city that would be presented to any new business as they're coming in and they're obtaining their appropriate business licenses to operate in the city. Most businesses are going to put up signage. In this particular case, if a new business comes in, the options or palette would be presented to them. They would be responsible for the cost. So as we are identifying the supplier who would be local, and we are very mindful of the cost consideration associated with the signage. And so the city will have control in that regard as far as presenting what's available to them to keep the standard up. But the cost would be assumed outside of this program for any new business coming in. That would be an operational cost that would be expected for, as a business owner myself, any new business that puts up signage, we're typically paying for that out of our operating budget as a business. And so in this case, we would be creating that palette, which is not uncommon, of what could be available. So yes, there could be the potential of a business. We start in November, a business goes out of business, say by February. a business goes out of business, say by February, yes, we have lost that funding as it relates, but we don't know, you know, the viability as it relates. One of the things that we did ensure is that similar to every other government agency, um, that they are in good standing uh, with the state, that they are legitimate businesses with the state. We did do that, uh, that validation. Uh, my apprentice, uh, Tia Kane, uh, who's also on the line. Um, she actually uh, is in the city. Um, she's there, she lives, um, and her business is operated out of the city as well. And so we did that due diligence, but the initial cost, yes, would be part of the grant. But any new business, they would be responsible for the cost of their own signage.
Jimmy, does that cover your questions?
Yes.
Thank you. So followed by Luke and followed by uh, Jared. Go ahead, Luke. The floor is yours.
Thank you very much. Um, I appreciate all the work that everybody's put into this. Um, uh, and I appreciate we're working with the businesses and getting out there on the streets and talking to everybody and find something that's, um, you know, in everybody's interest. Um, I, I have a couple of questions on the choice of, of colors. Um, especially starting um, sort of on the party time liquor store. So starting eastward. Um, there are a lot of hot colors, um, and it sort of leads to cooler colors at the end. Um, and I'm just wondering the thought process through that, the thought process with the black and yellow colors for the um, the, the way finding signs for pedestrians. Um, and whether any consideration was given to maybe using softer colors throughout. Um, e- especially with sort of how busy party time liquors can be, you know, it looks like the, your eye might be drawn to the liquor store when you're going down Rhode Island Avenue and might take your attention away from the other side of Rhode Island Avenue where we have art murals and stuff like that. I just want to know the thought process with the color palette and where the eye is going to have their attention drawn to as you drive through the city.
Um, who's going to answer this? The floor is yours to, uh, Luke, is that the only question you have? Or you want to answer?
One comment. I like the second version of the design for the police department.
Would be happy with that.
Yeah. So perfect. So who's going to answer this one? Tisa, you have the floor yours?
Yep, I'll start and then I'll punt to Sophie if I don't capture it all. Um, our inspiration was that last building. So when you first enter into the city from uh, Eastern Avenue, that brick is absolutely gorgeous. They don't even fire brick that way anymore. And to see all of the colors, I don't know if you've had an opportunity, um, councilman, to really look and admire that brick. But all the colors that are in our design are in that brick. And so that's where the initial color palette came to be. Um, was from that brick and trying to, and so even with uh, the first uh, conceptual that you see the whole block. Um, because you know, when you look at it holistically, one of the goals we wanted to make sure that we did was incorporate those colors um, from that brick. But then trying to have cohesiveness among the full block, yet allowing each business to be distinct. And so particularly when you have two businesses that are technically in one building. And so, but still trying to keep in the same color family, tying it into where they all are cohesive, but yet unique. And so that aesthetically, if you look straight on the block, it would be pleasing to the eye holistically. But yet you can see each individual and we were very concerned with party time as well. So I share the concern, concern with party time as a native Washingtonian and particularly in my early twenties, um, frequenting party time after the club. So I'm familiar uh, with party time. Uh, we were able to take some of the letters down. So as you know, right now he has party time liquors, beer and wine. We were able to take the beer and wine down because again, it's, it's like a two edged sword, right? Is that this is a business and we want to encourage him free enterprise, but yet we have the community image. And so trying to keep in the same theme of that. And so the, I don't know if it was clear or not, but those um, shapes that were coming off of the building, that's metal on metal. So the, the, the fascia that's there is already the existing gray. We wanted a no to low maintenance option. And Neil actually suggested, could we do a metal on metal? And so the intent is not to have any one particular business outshine another. But yet being mindful of all of them kind of playing um, together, if you will. When it came to the pedestrian sign of black and yellow, um, I know that um, from my perspective, again, Sophie can jump in here uh, in a moment. Um, we leverage the colors that are in the Mount Rainier um, logo itself. We also were mindful of other municipalities who have done something very similar. And the darkness and boldness of the black, particularly when you look at the MUTC design and when it's fully vetted and fully finished, most of the standards are black. So the, the, the new, the lighting posts that you would see along the street, they're tall, black and massive. The um, the signage that you see that are part of the design are, are black and massive. And so when we looked at the colors that would pop and nighttime, we felt the black with the Mount Rainier gold, which is inside of uh, your logo, would have a better um, uh, viewing aesthetically. Sophie, was there anything you want to add to that?
One, one second, Tisa, wait. Um, council, we have uh, gone over, we're at twenty minutes, a little bit over twenty minutes. Can I entertain a motion to add more time to this um, to this item to allow at least council member Jared um, to also have, if he has any questions, so I'll answer if anybody else from the public and for them to finish answering the question.
Yeah, I'd, I'd move to add ten more minutes.
Let's make that a hard stop.
Well, Jimmy, I'll, I'll ask for a ten minutes to figure out what you guys want to do. So there's a motion on the floor to add ten more minutes. Any second?
Seconded.
Second by Jared. So any objections about adding ten more minutes? Hearing none, we're adding ten more minutes. Uh, Jared, uh, can you please let me know when we're down to the one minute mark from those ten minutes, please? All right, go ahead, Sophie.
Thank you. And I think just to add to um, what Tisa was uh, was saying, we kind of, we looked at some inspiration from the end building. We also looked at the lofts, kind of that material palette. And we looked at some of the colors that were being used um, on the opposite side of the road in the mural and then also the new mural on the opposite side, um, as well as the, the colors of the existing logo. So I feel that um, I, I kind of get your point that there's, there's a difference, but we, um, if you can, and, and also to your other point, I think we will be kind of changing up the um, the police uh, station with the, with the second option there. Um, but we tried to kind of pick up where we have red in party time. We also uh, Panlord's, their signage um, has a red in it. Um, Medi Market and Kitchen, Aladdin's Station, um, as well as American Custom Print um, as well. So we have, uh, we've kind of been trying to give some consistency, but also that individual flair. Um, and really also trying to kind of respond to the fact that this is, these are businesses within the arts district as well. Um, and so to kind of give a bit of creativity um, to those kind of various designs as well as trying to um, to kind of have the consistency. And the consistency comes in, um, the size of the letters, uh, the, the back and the um, material of what those letters are made of. Um, and also just to note, some of these things are placeholders as well. So this won't be the exact uh, kind of final design.
Okay. Thank you, Sophie. Luke, does that answer your, your questions?
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, Jared. The floor is yours, council member?
Yeah, I'll make my, thanks. I'll make my comments quick. Um, just want to thank everyone for their work on this, Neighborhood Design Center, Ron. Um, I know it's been a, it's, it's been a um, road to getting the funds together. Um, you know, and having been here over the last ten, eleven years, I really, you know, the facades of a lot of the storefronts have um, often have been great, but I think this uh, this really gives um, really gives some needed uh, kind of the invisibility on the, on the corridor, which I think is uh, particularly challenging because it's on a um, state highway. So I appreciate it. Um, Jimmy got, uh, Jimmy asked my, my, my question as well, which was the uh, you know, we do have some degree of turnover, um, and you know, how to, how to handle that if um, to have the facade potentially be usable past, um, past a single business. But um, other than that, I think that was it. Um, actually, one, no, one question real quick. Um, is there for the facades of design, I was just curious what the typical uh, typical life of that design before it needs to be refreshed or redone, um, typically is?
Um, who will answer that from the collective?
I will yield to Sophie and or Ally for that.
Sophie or Ally?
Yeah, I'm happy to um, to answer that. I mean, I think it really, you know, it varies because we're looking at kind of different applications. So kind of paint on brick has a certain amount of life, life cycle. And the signs, um, most of them are all kind of composite board and they have um, you know, a pretty long life cycle. Um, and also we will be, and, and Tisa can speak to this, but I'm sure that we will be kind of getting guarantees on um, on everything in terms of kind of life cycle. Again, looking at the lights, um, you know, there's uh, there's kind of maintenance there with replacing bulbs and stuff like that. But I think um, specifying robust light fixtures um, will be kind of important for that next step of that detailed design and making sure that the materials we specify that uh, as robust as possible. So it's not necessarily a, you know, this is definitely going to last ten years because we're not quite there yet. But I think we're going to be, you know, looking to make sure that that investment will last as long as possible.
Great. Thank you so much. Appreciate the answer.
Jared, you have all your answers. Um, are your questions answered?
Yep, no more questions. Thank you.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, council. Um, at this point, I do see we have a couple of members of the public. I think most of the questions were answered from the chat. Is there anybody else from the public that would like to say something? Just type your name in the chat and, and we'll call on, we'll call on you. Okay, so I'll save my few minutes while they're, while people are getting to it. So no, definitely thank you for putting this together. I think the, the close to detail that you guys have done, like getting involved with like the business owners, but also the, you know, the owners of the buildings have been very great because it has allowed for them to be able to hear, you know, be heard and be feeling, they have gone through the various um, like this are so various sections of like the, the, the different improvements of the design. So this wasn't like you did one and, and it's done. The other thing to mention, Ron, correct me if I'm wrong, there are going to be two um, big posters located one in City Hall and the other one by uh, by Ron's office. So that would, there's also like that extra view for people to see if they would like to take a look at it. Uh, the other thing is like, maybe it doesn't translate very much through the screen. Uh, but we have a power team of, of women, very diverse, working together um, in order to lead the efforts for this group. So that was definitely very impressive for that point to, to be added. Um, a lot of times we have maybe one woman sitting in the table, if any, if not, as a secondary in, in command. But you're talking about a power team uh, working together, a woman uh, leading and, and basically the conversations that I've even had with them has been very um, very supportive. How do they work together and how they um, enhance the, the greatness that each of them have. So next, uh, Ron or Tisa, can you please let me know what are the next, um, what are the next steps of, aside from presented here to um, to us? Where does this move on from, from here?
So the next step actually is going to MUTC, uh, preparing the RFP for bid. And then also soliciting more funds from DHCD and other organizations for phase two of the Main Street initiative. This is all part of the Main Street um, application. And we're going to do the facade improvement on Thirty Fourth Street as well. So that's phase two. Uh, also, I want you to bear in mind that if you have Instagram, a lot of the interviews from the building owners are speaking actually about the facade improvement project. So if you have Instagram, uh, tune into the city of Mount Rainier and you can see very short interviews from all the business and property owners on Rhode Island Avenue and their thoughts and comments about the facade improvement project.
Thank you. And just to make it clear, uh, there are at least four uh, phases, correct? That involves all the businesses through the city, not just like Thirty Four in Rhode Island.
Yes.
This is we a pattern, how to move forward through the other phases as far as the main street. And we're hoping that this makes the application a lot stronger to be able to apply it and unlock other grants. Correct?
Yes, absolutely.
All right. So um, I know the, and some of the MUTC members were invited, so that's great. Um, so I will, if none of the other council members has any questions, I would like to move on to the next item. Jimmy, one minute. Go ahead.
Ten seconds. So just my understanding is this does not have to come back for council. Once MUTC approves it, you can move ahead. We don't have to make any more decisions about this. Is that correct?
Are you asking me or? I, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I mean.
I, I don't, I don't, I'm just following the protocol. I don't know if city council has to vote on it or anything like that. I just know we have to get approval from MUTC. So I defer to like Luke, Mayor and yourself. I don't know.
So that's more on the administrative end, but um, I think that after MUTC, Ron will keep us in touch with Kamali as well to let us know what the answer for MUTC was. If there was any changes coming forward or not, and when they plan to start. Um, we could always come back to do a final presentation. If there's like major changes, uh, you guys have to um, discuss that. But I, my understanding is like most of the things that you see here are basically what's going to be presented and we should move forward. Um, Luke, do you have your mic? Oh, your hand up? Oh, sorry. So that's kind of where we're at. So I would say have them go to MUTC, figure out what MUTC is going to say about the signage and stuff like that. And they could bring it uh, back to us if, if, you know, if there's no other changes, then it's one thing. If there's any changes, then like, you know, to, you know, bring it back to us. Okay?
I agree.
But at this point, they'll keep in communication to us to see what, what, what it looks like. Cause if they're going to present the same exact thing to us, I'd rather than let us know an update as a timeline of where they're at and when the work will start and um, because we have definitely um, um, but the other thing is like, remember, this is not the end all. If you have some of the question pops up, uh, Kamali, Mr. Hopkins will be able to help and they'll send it over to um, the team that's working on this. Okay? Jimmy, does that answer your question?
Perfect. Let's move ahead.
All right. Thank you so much. Uh, Tisa, Neighborhood Design Center as well for all the work. And we look forward to continue working with you guys. Thank you, Ron, as well for all your work and dedication and making sure we get all the grants.
All right, you're welcome.
So much for the opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay, so next on the agenda, it's um, bus canopies. Are, are they, living bus canopies, are they here?
Yeah, I'm here.
Hi, how are you? So the floor um, is yours.
Okay, great. Thanks, everybody. Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Council. For, for giving me some time to talk to you about my new initiative, the Cool Green Bus Stops. I have a PowerPoint presentation I wanted to share with you to introduce you to our, our concept.
Can you share, uh, can you make him, allow him to share, um, Jared, so that he has a, he could share with us his screen?
Could you introduce yourself?
Yeah, my name's Dave Tilly. I'm the owner of Living Canopies Limited. And I'm also a professor at the University of Maryland where I came up with the idea and have been commercializing uh, the living umbrella idea for the last five years. I'm a resident of a nearby university park, but I've spent a lot of time in Mount Rainier at the, uh, we used to go to the Christian Family Monastery that was using the Saint James Church for a number of years back in the, like fifteen years ago. My kids were in school there.
So do you have access to the shared screen already, David?
There we go.
Thank you so much.
All right, you guys see my presentation fine?
Yes.
Yes.
Great. Yeah, so I'm here representing my company, Living Canopies. So we came up with this idea in twenty fifteen for a living umbrella, which I'll show you a picture in a second. But uh, out of my ecosystem engineering design lab, which I've been at the university since two thousand and one. So I've been in the, in the area for quite a while. So one of the issues that we see is with bus stops. If you go up and down US one, just between Mount Rainier and the, and the Beltway, there's something in order, forty-five bus stops, and only about half of those have any kind of shelter whatsoever. And this is a typical, and I think this is in, in Brentwood. close to you guys' area there. So there's no shelter. Uh they tend to be kind of unattractive spaces sometimes, but they're in prominent locations. On top of that, we have issues with climate change, which I'm sure the the council and the mayor are very aware of, dealing with with urban heat and and managing stormwater. So we see there's some opportunity to take advantage of of the issue. Maybe we can kill uh not kill, but it solves multiple problems at the same time. So one of the things we take inspiration from is the Bird's Eye View project that the uh your area inspired and worked with Park and Planning a number of years ago. Something that's attractive, it's artistic, it really brings out the the character of the of the neighborhoods and really shows some local identity being unique and remarkable. You know, if we look at the typical bus stop, the old solution is to provide a hard structure with glass enclosures. It's protective of of the the waiting riders, but it's quite unremarkable. It actually adds to the urban heat island effect with the hard surfaces. It mismanages the storm water by basically adding to the impervious surface, and typically they're quite expensive. There have been examples where people have retrofitted uh existing bus shelters with green roofs. These are thin soils with vegetation on them. Usually they use a sedum type of vegetation that's usually used for green roofs. So you get some stormwater benefit from the soil absorbing the water. You get some cooling from the plants using the water through evaporative cooling. You see this a little more common maybe in in Europe. What we're suggesting is we could adapt our living umbrella technology. So with this, this is what we developed and patented at the university. By the way, the university is part owner in in Living Canopies. I'm very supportive of my my efforts over the last five years. Basically, you have the soil that's on top in the canopy, so you don't see the the baskets. They're holding the soil in place. And then there's a solar powered automated smart irrigation system that's associated with it. So there's a solar panel up on top. And then down below in this example, you see there's a water tank and this little box has a battery and the controller and the the water pump. So basically, you fill this pump this tank up periodically and the water is applied to the soil on an as needed basis. So when the soil dries out, the soil moisture sensor knows that and it tells the pump to turn on. We've been in business selling these since 2017. It took us a few years to develop the product at the university, but we sold them to restaurants like Vigilante Coffee, has the one up at the College Park location. You see here in the picture, it was featured in the Washingtonian magazine. We sold them to Marriott and New York Botanical Garden, and most recently, we were selling them in a few Sam's Club this past spring to homeowners. This past summer, we were able to donate a couple to Hyattsville to uh invigorate their efforts to turn the brownfield on Hamilton Street. They call it the spot next to the trolley trail into a green space. So you see example of two of them here with the picnic table. So our design, our conceptual design is to basically expand and adapt the idea of the living umbrella, but make it into a bus stop. So here you see there would be basically be a soil container. There's this large area. The nice thing about this is it would also double as a hard shelter for to provide, you know, roof and and weather protection to the waiting riders. And then also would serve as a rain harvester. So when you have excess amount of rainfall, that excess rainfall is captured and sent down to uh the bench, the seating area here, which actually also serves doubles as a water cistern. And then it would also have our smart watering system to apply the water. So the left half over here would be a soft planted canopy. We use mostly vine species. We could use a lot of native species. There's quite a few varieties of species of plants that are available. It has a solar panel to drive the whole system. So the benefits, you know, you're protecting people by providing shade and a cooler environment. The plants add to to cooling the the space. Obviously, get the shelter, some some education on sustainability practices. From an environmental standpoint, you're being able to reduce the urban heat island effect. You're capturing some storm water, a few hundred gallons, depending on the size of the the bus stop. So you're adding to stormwater management. And then you're capturing some carbon with the plant canopy growing. Uh and then as far as the community, you know, we think it's remarkable, it's innovative, it'd be very unique and, you know, it's the green space and could also add to a wider conversation about sustainability practices. So we just submitted an application to the Exelon Foundation. They have a climate change investment initiative where we suggested that we would do a demonstration project in Northern Prince George's County, and we're looking for partners. We got support from College Park, Riverdale Park, Hyattsville, Berwyn Heights, Hyde City. Campus is is coming along, although it's taking a little longer than I I hoped. So we're here today, you know, really looking for, and we've also been in conversations with the county, with the folks at the transit operation, as well as starting conversations with some of the schools, especially the Outdoor Schmidt Center. So what we're really here looking for is to see if you guys are interested in in the project and participating. If we do get the grant, it would be a three-year demonstration. We're looking for modest matching funds. Depending on the size of the shelter for the bus stop, you're looking at maybe somewhere between $500 to $1,000 per year, per shelter over the three years to participate. And that's really kind of, you know, where I am. We're going to continue to write grants. We want to write Chesapeake Bay Trust. There's also some potential money from the Department of Natural Resources. Campus has the Maryland Industrial Partnerships that we've we've gotten money from before, and we're going to be applying for that grant. And some other campus uh funding coming up in October. So, you know, letters of support would be something that we'd be interested in in receiving as well. So with that, I'll open up the questions or comments to see if I can answer anything.
So we started with war one last time. We're going to go with war two. Uh Jared, the floor is yours.
Yeah, thank you. David, for coming in today. Like, Dave, I probably appreciate the um presentation and um talking through that. I'm sorry, I was a little unclear. So have you you all have done uh you all have done the deployment of this style in Hyattsville? Have you have you done a active bus stop yet?
No, this will be the first effort to do a bus stop. We've only our customers up to this point have only been mostly private uh businesses and homeowners. We've sold to a few governments, but not anything in Maryland. And we haven't done the bus stop. So the bus stop would be completely new product for us.
Okay. Um, so I I really like I really like the idea. I like the uh, you know, the book from an aesthetic perspective and kind of providing a, you know, something is a unique respite um for transit riders, of which we have about 35, 40% of our um popular, well, at least pre-COVID, 35 to 43, 40% or so um take transit to work. So it's a really critical part of getting away, getting around the city and out and in. I so I will say I I've worked for I work in transportation. I worked in for two transit agencies. One, it was a city department um and owned the bus stop, one that covered multiple cities and worked with municipalities to um who owned the bus stop, but the transit agency provided the service at it. In both cases, and this is something, I mean, it's not specific to Metro, it's not specific to Womata. Uh it's not specific to DC. I I always find it to be, it has always been particularly challenging to maintain and upkeep bus stops. And, you know, I I guess one of the concerns, I really love the design, I really love the aesthetics. You know, one of the concerns I have is from a maintenance is from the maintenance perspective. You know, what you what you would foresee. And then the other, you know, the other question is, um if you've you know, in in being interested in doing this, you know, we we largely in general control the area around the bus stop. Signage and etcetera, that's Womata or or in this case, the bus. Have you have you had any in um engagement with either Metro staff or Prince George's County DPWNT, the bus, the county's bus system?
Right. So I the question about the maintenance, that's a great question. For the demonstration, for the three-year demonstration project, we would take on all of the maintenance ourselves. So we would we would provide, you know, basically, the maintenance would include, you know, keeping the place clean, but but being able to trim the vegetation, make sure that plants are healthy, make every shit thing is is working correctly. And then I think at the end of the three years, we would evaluate and see, um, you know, if if the towns wanted to take over the maintenance uh of this of the stops. We'd obviously provide training in order to do that, or we could, you know, potentially, if you like them and want to keep them, we could continue to do the the maintenance for them for for a small fee. The conversation, I haven't had a direct conversations with Womata other than I started a conversation with the State Highway Administration because I was really interested in doing high-profile sites. So there's been an email exchange that got started. They brought in Womata to kind of get their their take on it. They basically kind of came back and said that, you know, they didn't have any funding, that this was really up to the towns and and anybody that you know, wanted to have this amenity, if a town wanted to have this amenity, then they just have to abide by the, you know, the right of way and the the rules that go along with the siding, the the view and, you know, ADA compliance and those types of things. I have started a conversation with the with the Prince George's County Transit Group. I just had a conversation with the Fawn, the Ponty and a couple of other folks, and I've continued that. What I understand from them is they have a third party that manages the the bus stops, you know, independent of the of the bus system. So I'm waiting to have a meeting with with that group to really understand you know, how they operate and what the potential is for doing it in the in the count on the county roads and the county rightways. But I would love to have, you know, think of this potential to continue more with Womata. I really haven't pushed to to work directly with them, but but it seemed like they wanted to say, you know, this is something the towns could do and they wouldn't get in the way.
And can I ask a, I guess, a second question? Oh, sorry.
It's your floor.
Yeah, second question. Um, you know, because the the purpose of a bus stop, obviously, there's an aesthetic benefit to your approach here, but the purpose of the stop is to provide, um, you know, a respite, a place to sit and wait uh and also to provide, um, you know, provide a um shelter. So I I I guess the concern I've had, and I if you, you know, if you go back to the slides of the earlier bus stop design, I mean, one of the one of the uh like like slide four or something like that. Yeah, so you know, we use this a lot in transit. I mean, it's not beautiful. I'm going to be the first to say that. It is very functional in both a hot and a cold weather scenario. And, you know, one of the things I think about when I as a transit rider, as a transit professional, when I look at the the other setup is that it doesn't provide a long shelter, particularly in cold weather. And I guess I was wondering if you could speak to, you know, in a in a in a lush springtime scenario, this is helpful. In a wintertime scenario with cold winds and waiting outside 15 minutes possibly and freezing weather, this is this is actually less effective as an actual shelter than than the um than the previous version you showed.
Yeah, I'd say that, you know, these are our first concepts, and I could easily see, you know, adding some some glass on the sides and the back to add that that extra protection for the for the winter and the times and the in the colder time. I think, you know, one perspective we kind of had on this, and I'd love to kind of get your feedback, is there's so many bus stops that don't have anything. So it seems like, you know, just adding at least some type of shelter, you know, whether even it's seating or not, seems like it's it's a benefit. It may not meet all the criteria that people are looking for. You know, so there's kind of, we're thinking of kind of a range of opportunities. There could be like the almost the umbrella style that we saw. You know, this one. Simple, uh, you know, it's protecting you. There's some, there is some hard cover that would be provided that's that you can't see the kind of vegetation. As opposed to, you know, this one, which would be like an eight-foot wide kind of standard uh type of shelter. So I'd love to hear more back from what the needs are at the kind of, you know, thinking about different stops. And this is really good feedback for me to hear, so I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Uh Jared does. Okay, so next I'll go with Luke, followed by Jimmy. Luke, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Selena. And Jared, thanks for your expertise on this. I think that and Brian Nedler is is all over the comments on this. Um it's good to hear that you've had contact with Womata. They do own the bus stops. The city doesn't own them, so if, you know, we'd have to get them to sign off on anything we would do. So we'd have to make sure there's really good coordination there before doing anything. So that may be work for you on the front end before we can sign off on anything. And I'll just say from my perspective, the bus stops that are near our downtown core do have a historic element to them. Uh they do look like the old streetcar stops and I don't think, you know, I don't have an interest in replacing those. Those are really great shelters as somebody who takes the bus. There are a lot of people waiting down there and we can all fit and get pre-COVID times, we can all fit under the shelter and stay out of the rain and it's really kind of nice and they and they look nice there. But, um, you know, there may be other spots along Rhode Island Avenue if you're set on staying on Route One. I think there's a stop in front of the fire station, if I remember correctly, or in front of St. James. There may be one also on the other side of the street in front of the post office. There are also spots along Arundel Road. There are some bus stops there that I think might that do not have shelters, that this may be something neat for that. Also, Eastern Avenue, although DC owns the Eastern Avenue, that's not us. But there's um, there's a bus that that goes through Mount Rainier, um so it's not on one of the major thoroughfares. It's along Rainier Avenue. Up Shore Street and then Russell Avenue down to Arundel Road. And so there's a there's a route there that, um, like you said, there are no shelters. So this would be a welcome respite in some of those areas. Arundel will be a little bit more heavily trafficked um of those locations. So I could definitely see us putting somewhere there is none. But I I think, you know, I I don't know if I'd be for replacing the existing sort of historic ones that we have. And but I think this is a super awesome design, and I'm a big fan of this design and concept and all the sustainability issues that you cited. So again, I think step one is making sure we have coordination with Womata. And then step two is just right, finding the right site. Thanks.
Great. Thanks, Luke. Thanks for the insight on the roads. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Uh Jimmy?
Uh there's also Queens Chapel Road, but uh honestly, uh having dealt with the bus stops, you know, as a legislator, they're really county and Womata, and we don't have much control over those. So I mean, if you could get a sign off saying that we can do this, that's fine, but I don't think we it's not useful for us to spend a lot of time on this until Womata and and the county say that, you know, we can do something with those. So I would really kind of suggest that before we really have a lot of discussion there, that you kind of get something in writing saying this city can do something on this stuff. Because my understanding, having dealt with it in a long time, is it's their stops and that the city doesn't have much control over it. Now, if I'm wrong, just get me, you know, to see something writing about that, but they've always said it's their stops, their their jurisdiction.
Yeah, the email the email response that they had from both Womata and the bus, at least from when Peter Campanidis from the State Highway Administration emailed them, you know, I didn't email them directly. They were both saying that the towns could do what they wanted as long as they follow the rules at the at the stop, you know, with the right of ways.
Did you share that with us then or just put it in writing?
Sure.
See that, that would be helpful.
I think there's there's more conversation to have with them. That was just kind of an initial, you know, here's an idea. What do you guys think? So I think there's a lot of conversation to have with them, and I'd love to have more buy-in from Womata for sure.
Okay, thank you, David. Thank you, Jimmy. The reason why this is in front of you is one, uh because I wanted to make sure that if anything were to happen with Womata in the in the Plaza, the city at least was like in talks early enough so that we know what was happening. Okay? So we're in front of this in case there's change in coming. Brian, um you have the floor if if you want it, or we like need to read the read the chat. That was like, guys, we would not be going anywhere right now. Brian, uh do you want to speak? Nope. Okay, I'll read it, Brian. I say, so what is my things? This is on the bus stop where the answer a town so on the bus stop, correct? And willing to pay for it, of course, and you don't have wish to speak. I think I did a first summary of Brian. Like I said, this is a work session. There's uh people come in front of you to ask them questions regarding where to leave. And I think we've done a a very informative session so that way David has uh next steps on who they need to talk. And I think we done a, um, a very informative session so that way David has, uh, next steps on who they need to talk, what we need to see. And it will help, you know, a lot of the feedback, especially there's a lot of expertise in this room, to figure out what it looks like and the other stuff. So David, uh, thank you so much for joining us tonight and giving your presentation. We look forward to also hearing from you, um, to figure out where this, where this is going. And, um, if there's any possibility of like potentially pairing up, uh, once the other answers, um, the other questions get answered, including, um, Wamata and, um, you know, um, right, okay?
Great, so is it best to stay in direct contact with you mayor? Or should, uh, is there someone else that should be my contact or?
So Mr. Kamali, sir, City Manager, if you send something to him at citymanager@mountreiniermd.org, you'll shuffle it through everybody that needs to have it, mayor council and also the staff to follow up. And I think I heard somebody wanted to talk, is it somebody from the public that would like to speak?
Yes, county council member Danny Taveras.
Hi Danny, how are you?
Hi Lena, how you doing?
Luke, fly, the floor is yours Danny.
Yes, um, this is so cool. I'm so excited about this. If there, uh, David, if you want to reach out, um, we can also, um, have a conversation because this would be cool, not just in areas like, um, the municipalities, but also, you know, we're, we need to put in another artistic kind of, um, a bus stop over in, 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 by the new Wawa that's being constructed. So this would be pretty cool. So, um, so I'm, I'm interested not just to work with Mount Rainier on this issue, but also in other areas of the district as well, where we need new bus stops. And we want to be able, I'm, I'm trying to figure out if we could do a new sidewalk over and on, um, East West Highway, um, where there is no sidewalk and people are, are walking in the, in the crevices as you walk towards the, um, the mall at Prince George's. So, so we want to be able to create like new sidewalks there. And there are bus stops there that could also use this as well.
Great, well, I'd love, I'd love to continue the conversation with you Danny. If you want to contact me, email me, my email's here at dave@livingcamps.com, it'd be great to continue the conversation.
Oh, I, 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 honey, I don't see that.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, I, okay, I see it here. Can, can you just email me the slides?
Yeah, so, uh, David, I'll put you in contact with Danny's office so that would make it a little bit easier. Would that work for both of you?
Yes, that'd be great.
Okay, thank you David.
Thank you.
Thank you Mayor Benitez, I knew you guys would be doing cool stuff.
Thank you Vice Chair Danny Taveras, we appreciate this. Okay, so moving on to the next line item. And you see, presentation on water storm management, uh, studied by LID and EcoSite. Uh, the floor is yours, Mr. Kamali, to open it up for them?
Yes, uh, hello mayor and council. As, uh, you know that we have received, uh, the ARPA money and, uh, hopefully we're trying to see if we could have some good projects for the ARPA in the stormwater management area. So I reached out to LID and EcoSite to, to have this, you know, opportunity tonight and present some information to mayor and council. So I will have, uh, I will, you know, turn it over to Neil and Mike. And hopefully they're going to be able to present their PowerPoint and information to mayor and council and the public.
Great, could you, uh, just give me the screen?
Thank you, and Luke, you'll go right after them, okay? Because I know this is, uh, something that you have, um, that you definitely are very invested on, okay? Thank you.
Sure.
So the floor is yours, uh, Neil?
Great, can you see that?
Yes.
Great, so let me put in the, uh, go up to the slide. Okay, thank you very much. I know it's late, so we'll try and go as quickly as we can and, um, presentation and then be glad to answer questions. So, um, this all began, so just to introduce the team, uh, my name's Neil Weinstein, the LID Center. And we've been working in and around Mount Rainier for a good 15 years probably. And, uh, Mike Clark, uh, with EcoSite, um, uh, has been working here quite some time too. So we work together on projects or we coordinate projects a lot of times. Uh, I'll do the planning work and Mike will probably do more of the, uh, hard engineering, uh, are both groups. We've been working together for, Mike and I, for 20 years and we still talk to each other, which is a good thing. Um, and, uh, Karush, uh, asked us, he said, let's go find some projects and, uh, some good projects in Mount Rainier. And so the three of us, uh, went through a process of, uh, talking to different people, talking to some of the council folks and, um, uh, looking around at, uh, some potential projects for you to review, discuss and, uh, hopefully select so we can move ahead. Um, and, uh, so with that, I'd like to look at the first project. We have a list of projects here. And, uh, for each project, what we did is we did a fairly detailed call estimate of the concept plan. So you'll see, I'm going to show you the plan and then a picture. Um, now the first project is actually, um, a continuation of Memorial Park. And, um, if you've noticed the last couple of days, um, uh, there's been some trucks out there. Uh, State Highway maintains the inlets along Route One, Route One, Rhode Island Avenue. And, uh, they were clogged, so we had a very difficult time trying to, um, get survey information on the storm drains. There was a lot of issues down there. And, uh, uh, Karush, uh, did a, a good job with State Highway and he got them to agree to clean out the inlets in front of, uh, Rhode Island Avenue, so they've been working on that. It's been pretty tough. Um, the county is on 33rd Street, there's some inlets and some infrastructure that are totally clogged. Uh, and we have to get the county or someone, county supposedly maintains these, but we need to go get these cleaned out. Um, one, because it tells us we need it for design and two, um, we were actually out there a couple of times, we've been there, picture, people have been showing us pictures of flooding in and around the building from the road not being able to take the drainage away. So, um, what we're doing on this project is we're translating the design and, um, uh, making it into construction drawings. We've had some issues in which the, um, utilities, there's some major utilities that run down Perry Street. So we're trying to figure out how to solve some of the drainage issues without having to relocate some major, there's some major gas lines and water lines that run through there. Um, so we can't really give you a good cost, um, estimate till we figure out what we're doing with these utilities and, uh, how that affects the design or how we have to adjust it. Second project is, uh, the list of projects, I can't see the right corner of, um, the display. So we picked out, uh, seven projects in addition to, um, uh, the Memorial Park project. And, uh, here's a list of projects, Arundel Road, Green Street, Perry and 31st, uh, street, street traffic, uh, management, uh, drainage improvements in the alley on Perry Street, uh, Otis, uh, street area. Um, there was four projects there, 31st Street, Green Street, 32nd Green Street, Green Street and Perry Street, Green Roof. So, which we just recently added. And you can see here, what we did in Arundel is we just kind of went out to the site and based on our experience, things like curb bump outs, intersections and, uh, how this, um, you know, dividing, so this, the street putting in dividing planting area. So to do that, um, we used estimates from State Highway Administration estimates, county estimates, spot for bonding, uh, and plus our own knowledge. And, uh, there's about a 30% contingency and we have the detailed cost estimate that we can give you. Um, and so this is about $2.4 million to go from, uh, currently the end of the Green Street, which I think it's on, um,
31st.
31st, 31st, uh, all the way to, to over to the district line. Um, and so that's the first project. Uh, the, the, that's the largest project that we have. The next is, um, kind of the back entrance that people use, uh, off of Perry Street and Eastern. Um, where there's cut through and you can see there's the bollards that are out there right now that are getting knocked over. So we want to have a more permanent, uh, ins- installation where we direct traffic, uh, into a series of one-way. Um, so the alley comes out this way and so they can't cut through this back area through here. Um, don't ask me to explain this, uh, placement of these, it's kind of late at night. And, uh, um, there's a lot of little lines in here, but what we're going to do is, um, control the traffic, redo the intersection and put some stormwater best management practice along where there's an existing concrete gutter, um, there. The next is the alley down in Perry Street, that low area. There's a whole bunch of, there's several inlets in there that clog all the time. So we want to replace and probably redo some aprons, uh, to some of the driveways so we can keep water out of the back of people's yards and houses. Um, and so this would tie into a retrofit. And we have about 110 grand associated with that. And that's for probably three or four inlets that need to be redone, plus some minor concrete work.
Sir, can you, can you clarify, what are those red dots again? It's hard to read the legend.
Um, the red dots are, uh, storm drain structures. So that's probably, uh, where an inlet is, an existing inlet or a existing manhole. So there's, I think, two or three down there existing already. Uh, and so we would look at changing probably the type of style of manhole or, or inlet, so it's more efficient in getting, especially there's a lot of trash and debris there. So we want to move that through the system and not clog, uh, the existing rates that are down there. Um, and then we have, um, uh, 31st Street and we talking about using, oh, excuse me about this, you know, more of these share, sharos is, I think, the, the cool term to use now. That's roadway and bicycle sharing. Um, we'd probably look at using things like permeable gutters and Mike has been really one of the leaders in the region, um, in using that, did use that in several port towns, locations. Um, and so, um, the street is a little bit, uh, steeper, but it has the potential to be able to do that. And also on, um, excuse me, this is, uh, 30, 32nd Street, the same concept. And you have to excuse me because I skipped a slide, I'm not like great with the clicker on. Go back to a slide, sorry. Um, back off of Otis Street, one of the things we looked at was, um, uh, making some of these streets one-way, essentially putting them on a road diet, we would call it. Um, and so bring the street in, uh, in, increase a green space and maybe look for a couple of opportunities where some bio retention curb bump outs. And so this would be traffic calming, um, and, uh, increasing green space around the street. And our final project is, uh, right over on Perry Street, uh, the new building that was just purchased and putting a green street on top, green, green roof, sorry about that. Um, the green roof on top of that. And that runs about, probably about $40 to $50 a foot. Uh, and it comes out to about $230,000. Um, like I said, we, we didn't get up on the roof, we didn't do any structural analysis, we're just going by costs. Um, and then you have to remember that any of these significant construction projects, they're probably going to take a good year or two to get through the permit process. Um, once they start moving along and once, you know, you select, uh, projects or have some modifications or have another project that you'd be interested in. So, um, with that, uh, we'd be glad to answer any questions that we can.
Okay, thank you Neil, Luke, you have the floor?
Thank you mayor. Um, I just want to let everybody know, um, you know, these projects come in with some pretty hefty, um, uh, dollar amounts. And, and the reason why we went out to have, uh, Neil, um, and everybody do this work over the summer is so we could understand how much these projects might cost so that we can make a better decision about how to divvy up the ARPA funding that's coming our way. Because there are shared interests between, um, community members, there were a lot of residents at our meeting on Saturday. Um, uh, so there's, there's shared interest between them and us on, on being able to provide relief for residents and businesses. Um, and so that's, you know, a, a big piece of how we want to use that funding. And then the other piece is what you see here tonight, which is, um, a lot of these stormwater, um, or green infrastructure improvements that is also permitted under the ARPA funding. Um, and so the question for us is we have this opportunity to do these things that, um, are going to be more and more necessary as we deal with climate change and have more, um, um, rain events like we did last year where we have a 45-minute deluge that comes out of nowhere, um, and floods that Perry Street alley or that 33rd and Perry Street. Um, so I just appreciate all the work, Neil, that, that you guys have, have done for us, um, and, and given us the ability to have an educated conversation about where our funding might go. Um, and I, I, I have a question on a couple of the projects. On 31st Street, um,
Let me bring that down, bring that up.
31st Street by Wyndham, yep, that one. So would the idea be to do the Green Street from like 31st all the way down to where it almost hits Eastern and then all the way to Arundel? Or is it just this portion we're looking at here?
I think we're just talk, talk, and, um, I'm not sure the exact boundary, exactly where we stop, but I think it's the, the ladder.
Okay.
These are where we're going to stop. So we'll, I'll verify that.
Okay, okay.
And I think it, I think it's the kind of thing where this street will, it would expand as far as we can, you know, for the budget. So there's some flexibility in there, if that kind of makes some sense.
Okay, and then I'm wondering if on the Arundel Road Street project, if you had any contact with the county on, on partnering on that, um, to extend their Green Street, um, I, I don't know if that would be, um, a possibility or if you had any conversations with the county?
Um, the only conversation I've had is with Frank Galassi, I think he's managing or Joanne, uh, or, or managing the construction of the project. And, um, just to find the, um, what their reaction was to it and, I mean, we haven't really asked them or said about continuation, but I think they were positive, you know, unofficially, so.
Okay.
You know, they've been working on that project up to that point for a long time.
Yeah, yeah. So then we have Danny Taveras here, who will just give us the money from the county to continue that project. So I'm glad Danny's here and she's committed that money for us.
I love you too Luke, I love you too.
He thought he was gone.
Um, I think that's the only questions I have. I will just say to residents who are on this call, um, you know, a, a lot of us have had stormwater management issues. So please email your, your, your questions, your comments on the projects that have been identified where you think we should spend the money. Um, and I'll stop talking, thank you Selena.
Okay, so follow up by, uh, Jimmy, then Jared? Jimmy, the floor is yours? Is Jimmy on parking somewhere or?
Good, you wish you could mute me more often. Uh, I, I, just to Luke, exactly what you think we should be doing with this? I mean, the total of these projects is about like $4 million. Do we, you know, put that in our, you know, discussion on, on ARPA stuff? Do we kind of figure out maybe prioritizing one of these things? I mean, looking for you for some kind of guidance about how we, you know, take all this and digest it, I guess.
Yeah, I think the important thing is to get some community feedback tonight, um, on what they think is important. I mean, I have my, um, ideas on what I think makes the most sense. Um, I, I know I've gotten a lot of comments. comments from people along Perry Street about the flooding there in the alley at thirty-third and Perry. We have money for that Memorial Park project already, so we we can sort of leverage that to do thirty-third and Perry and then the Perry Street Alley. So, you know, to me, that's a priority. Um but but I know the South Side um has expressed interest in expanding the tree boxes down there and helping beautify part of the South Side, so I know that's a big interest as well. Um as far as how much that we want to designate for these projects, I think that's part of um the conversation that we need to have later on the agenda. I think we we're we're gonna talk a little bit about that. And then I think in legislative, I think at our legislative meeting in in October, um when we, when we made, when we actually have to write up a budget amendment to find funding for ARPA, I think we have more conversation then and then, you know, but I I don't want to make a decision on it saying we're gonna do this much money tonight because I think you know, residents deserve getting some more input into this.
Okay, thank you, Jimmy. Are you, any other question? Okay, Jared?
Thanks, Selena. Um but thanks for sharing. Can you uh go back up to the the broad project map list? I think it was on slide three or something.
Sure. On the way.
Okay, that's, that's helpful. Um no, I see, I mean, like Luke, I see a lot of, you know, good projects here. I I hear more, uh I certainly hear a lot about the Perry Street. I'm also geographically closer, so I've um, you know, hear, hear that echoed by more residents, but I've also heard obviously a lot of concerns on the South Side um in the places you mentioned as well. Um you know, and and other locations, other projects, you know, the the Arundel Road one obviously hits, you know, hits a lot more of our residents than almost any one of these uh because of the number of folks that live, especially on the north side of the city and multi-unit. Um is is there, this is kind of a hard question, I guess, but like, is there a is there a way to, you could kind of quantify the impact that each one of these projects would have in terms of like, you know, I'm sorry, this is a really imperfect way to ask this, I guess, like mitigation of stormwater impacts before versus after? Like, you know, what, what is the benef, what, what is the impact of doing, say, the Arundel Road one or the the um, the, the projects on the South Side um on Otis um or others or Perry Street?
Do I have to do it tonight?
No, 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 no.
We can provide that information later.
We can provide that information to you.
Okay, that would, but that, that, that's helpful for our.
So one of the metrics that we use are the pollutants to the bay, which are nitrogen, phosphorus and suspended solids that we can look at and give you a rough, a rough estimate of of that reduction um in pollutants. Uh and plus, we can look at the volume. We can do some quick back of the envelope calculations, so you can get the relative impact of it.
Yep, and I I understand that's a, that's a, that's a too complex of a question or too complex of an answer to be delivered here, but I think
Yeah.
it is kind of helpful for thinking about, you know, we have limited resources. We have a, you know, larger number of projects than we have resources for. What um, you know, where, where's the most affected right now and impacted and where, you know, does a project generate the most, you know, shift
Yeah.
in terms of improvement based on the baseline, so.
And I would, and I would also look at the flooding issues if we can
Yeah.
resolve some of those around some of these properties. Um quite, quite, quite frankly, when doing work in the region, that's the number one question, you know, how can we stop some of these deluges? Or, you know, reduce the number of times that we have flooding. So that's, that's, we, it's pretty hard to answer that in a, in a preliminary basis. But we can, I certainly, I mean, I think you, directing your focus to that would would be a big help.
So thank you, Neil. Jared, anything else or you're good? Right now?
That's all I had on this.
So I'll, I'll say something before I move on. Um so definitely, I'm very much with you to figure out um who um what impact it has majority of it um in order to the session. The other thing is like, I want to make sure, but then clear right here says Otis Street one-way Green Street from thirty-four to thirty-six. I will say, uh definitely a community conversation needs to happen because you are gonna be alternating like the life of people if you do change all the streets into one-way. Uh Lisa, I'll tell you, I live in the South Side, so that will mean that I will have to enter through either Otis up thirty-six or thirty-seven depending because I'm right in the middle of the block. Right? And I have gotten enough feedback from the people on those streets that if a conversation, if if a change into one-way is gonna happen, they need to be involved, um heavily involved. So that might be a separate side conversation to make sure we differentiate what it means and what it is, so that way they're fully engaged because that's um a lot of people in those few blocks, including myself. Uh so that's one. The other thing is like, yeah, um I think that we also need to make sure we're looking into, one, we only have half of the money right now for ARPA, right? The other one is that we need to figure out whether or not uh the funding for the water storm management is gonna be coming in the next infrastructure bill. And if it is, some of this will might be able to be covered by that as well. So it might not be, and those might be even more restricted to infrastructure in comparison to everything else we're planning and do because the list is pretty long. Aside from the community conversation that we have, we are gonna give a couple of other dates that we are gonna be meeting with the community to hear feedback. So I don't want people to think that of this meeting, work session, decisions are voted, they're firm and solid. This is a work session to start massaging some of the information that um that's already been gathered, that people have been talking to us aside from the community conversation. So um I did ask for any resident, and this are standard rules for the city. If you would like to speak, we open the floor up. Uh but please make sure we need name and last name as well as your block number for where you live in order to um to speak. And so far I have Valerie Woodland, um Mount Rainier PTO Grounds, a chair committee, four hundred block of thirty street. Uh Valerie, the floor is yours if you want to ask a question.
Hey, um yeah, thank you for that. Um um so my, my one request and question is for, I, I think this is phenomenal. I love that we're looking at stormwater in this comprehensive way. I know that the resources aren't quite there yet, but we're working toward it as a city. I think that's great. Um but my one question, my one request, I guess, is that once you have kind of a plan or, you know, um or if you're seeking input, I mean, one of the main places that you're gonna find a lot of your community members is at your local schools. Um so I would request that the city of Mount Rainier or you know, the Green Team or the Tree Commission or all of the above come and kind of brief the city um residents who go to the local schools about what's happening so that we can, you know, you know, so parents have that a- ability to give input. I don't know, you know what I mean? Like, I don't know how much input you can get. I mean, you have to go block by block, obviously, but in terms of just reaching a broad community, I think it's good to go to the local schools. So I'd request that whenever you have a plan or even if you wanna, if you want to do like a teaching thing, you know, come to the local school PTO and like do a presentation on what's happening so that, because Mount Rainier Elementary School and Thomas Stone Elementary are both green schools and they're trying to continue their certifications in the next year, I think. I think Thomas Stone comes up this year and Mount Rainier is next year. Um and so having presentations from experts or people that are working toward these issues, I think can help. Um it can help their certifications. So that's, that, that was all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Valerie. And quick, quick question, Valerie. Um the PTOs are gonna be submitting a proposal from the last conversation, I believe, from the president's that they are gonna be submitting a proposal for uh funding for some items for ARPA as well, correct?
Um I, I think so. I think Pam Boozer Shutter, our board member, had been um had been working with people on that, but I'm not entirely sure about that, but I I think so.
Okay, right. Perfect. Neil, do you, you are gonna answer?
Yeah, I just had a question. Is um are those two schools part of the teaching and uh teaching for the environmental teaching program that AWS is running?
Um so the Anacostia Watershed Society has a list of schools. Um we are not currently on it, but we are a certified green school. I've been in touch with, thanks to you, I've been in touch with every environmental organization in the county and state. Um and um so I think we're well positioned to become part of that list, but we're not there yet.
Okay.
Perfect. Thank you. Um council members, any questions to answer or anything to add? Lucas, Jared, Jimmy?
Yeah, I, I just.
Go ahead, Jared.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to say um a, a couple of things. Obviously, this is um, this is helpful for a couple of reasons because when you're proposing to use, go after a capital project um of this size compared to, say, other activities that we could be doing, you need to have the stuff prepared ahead of time. Uh it's doubly important with all the infrastructure action happening in Congress right now. There may be opportunity very quickly. We need to have ideas proposed and some uh things ready. So I appreciate you preparing that. I didn't want to, you know, I I see your resident note in the corner and I want to acknowledge that. I'm sure we all will as well that you know, ARPA funds are not exclusively for the, for the purpose of stormwater that is ineligible use. Um it certainly is an important one, given the floodwater problems that we have that disproportionately impact um working class and low-income parts of our communities. So um but there's a, you know, there's, this whole process is looking at different opportunities uh and different eligibilities and looking at the unique, unique timing we have in terms of resources for the city. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Jared. And I think it's definitely important for, but in all that, we're getting our stuff ready because the infrastructure fund is clear. We need to make sure we have projects handy. Uh the other thing is like sometimes the time is limited when you co-expended. And in the time we try to do studies, that eats up time and like Neo mentioned, sometimes this is not something that's gonna be like done in one week or start next week. You have to go through the whole permitting process. So we're basically making ourselves very ready so that when the funding comes, we're able to utilize it. Uh Jimmy, you had your hand up?
I, I want to thank Luke and Kamali and Neil for actually. By the way, I just want to do a shout out to Neil, whose parents were Wine Science Deli at uh thirty-first and Upsher and grew up in our community, so thank you, Neil, for staying involved.
You're welcome. It's always, it's always fun to do stuff here and see how much the community is progressing.
I think it's good to have like something concrete that we can see as part of the, of the, and like some numbers for that. And I think it's part of a package. I sent everybody in council a link uh that looked like some of the things that are going to be in the uh the infrastructure bill. Uh so we can kind of play, I think it's all the more important that we, you know, the next point in the agenda that we get somebody to kind of give us some good advice on what does it look like in one bill versus other bills? And how do we uh kind of best manage our money? Uh I think this, you know, it's a good thing to be part of the overall package. I mean, we should be doing a little bit of this, a little bit, you know, a little bit of everything, everything that we can, you know, so we make sure that, you know, our ARPA money is used wisely. That's all. But thanks, Luke, and thanks, Neil, and thanks Kamali for putting in your presentation.
Yes, thank you, guys, for all the great work on it. Uh Mr. Kamali, can you make sure that this PowerPoint is uh on, Neil? Um can you make sure this PowerPoint is sent to all the councils so that way we could start reviewing it after the meeting as well?
Yes, I will do that.
Thank you so much. And council, we need to start working on setting up some community meetings to be able to uh discuss some of these things so that way like um we're able, you know, we're able to move forward as well where, where, where we see some of the very troubling spots um that need, that need help. Mr. Kamali, go ahead.
Yes, I just wanted to uh say thank you to Luke for his direction and, you know, giving me this ideas to go and uh work with Neil and Mike. I just want to say thank you, Neil and Mike, because this is a free of charge. We haven't paid anything. And we're not gonna pay anything for that. And they have been working with the city and I appreciate their service. So that was just uh an idea from Luke and I just went after that and that's, we could, you know, present all of this, you know, information tonight. And hopefully Mayor and uh council and the public will come up with some good feedback for us to move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Kamali. So thank you, Mike, um and Neil as well. And definitely I know you're invested in this city and you love this city and Jimmy already discussed like how long of a commitment uh you guys have had in this city. And so uh thank you for that as well. All right, council, so.
Mayor. Yeah, sorry, Mayor, just one more thing. Um and I forgot to thank Mike. Thank you, Mike. I want to get that shout out in there. But also um just so folks know, the in, the, the, the infrastructure bill, um while it obviously has a ton of money for infrastructure, um it, 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 it won't be, it probably won't be like what, what's happening now, which is the city getting a deposit of three million dollars to do with what the city thinks it should do. A lot of the infrastructure bill just increases funding in existing federal programs. And a lot of that money gets eaten up by really big cities, by states, by counties. So um I mean, I, I need to look at the specifics of the bill and I, everybody does and we need to hire a consultant, but the idea that we might just get another influx of cash is probably not what's gonna happen with the infrastructure bill, just so level-setting expectations with everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Luke. So let's move on to the next item. We're ready? I see shaking heads for everybody. The next item is update on ARPA uh consultation firms. We have twenty minutes allocated. Um so update from city manager on consultation firms from the city um ARPA uh funds. Uh so, Mr. Kamali, the floor is yours. I know you shared with the council the three um three proposals. Can you give us a little bit of an update of where we're at?
Yeah, uh thank you, Mayor. As you know, that uh we received the ARPA money on August twenty-third, two-point-seven million dollars out of five-point-four million. So uh in order to get ready for the ARPA uh projects, uh we looked for the city requested uh consulting services to assist the city in spending the ARPA money. So I received three proposals, which I sent it to the mayor and council last week. And I appreciate if you guys provide me the feedback and then we can move forward. And uh the package has all the information, the scope of the work. And the three uh consultings are, one is Thomas and uh Michael. The other one is, is the Green Wheel and the other one, the third one is O'Malley Miles Consulting Services. So I appreciate if you guys let me know, then I can move forward. Just, you know, please give me some direction and I'll be glad to move forward with that directions.
Okay, so we're going Jared, Jimmy and Luke, since we started with one last time? Jared?
Uh let me hold, why pull them up? Uh if I can pass to Jimmy or um or Luke? Sorry, if that wasn't clear. Um can I pass to uh Jimmy or Luke?
Mayor, can I go next then?
Mayor, Jimmy's asking.
The floor's yours. That's okay, Mr. Kamali. Heard him. The floor is yours, Jimmy.
The first question is, are we just giving advice to uh Mr. Kamali and he'll make a decision? Or does this have to come back? I'm just not sure with the uh.
So I would like for you guys to review them. And if you guys find like what, one or two, we could there bring them up for them to present. Um it's up to council right now. Um either way, we're gonna have to announce publicly who we selected and vote on it, once we select it. But right now, he's given us information for us to like, you know, look, uh compare one with the other. And if we have any questions, we can move forward from there.
So I, I do have some comments and I guess uh maybe it's possible for Mr. Kamali, after he hears our comments, to make a recommendation. And we can vote on it at the legislative meeting. If that's all right with the mayor and council. Uh all, I mean, I looked at the proposals earlier today and all three seem to be a similar uh cost event. The initial one we had seen was much higher. One of the, yeah, all uh twenty-five hundred dollars uh a month or which comes to about three thousand dollars a year, which is, I think, appropriate amount. And I think the money can be paid out of ARPA money. Uh I know all three are not that well. Uh just to let you know, uh two of them are like lobbyists uh who do a lot of stuff lobbying. Uh Green Rule's a man named Ivan Lanier, who's been a longtime lobbyist in Annapolis. Uh O'Malley Miles, they're all very similar. Uh uh there's a guy named Ladducci, who's also, they do, it's a law firm that does a lot of stuff. Larry Taub, who's a real estate attorney, is part of their firm. They do lobbying. Uh my general tendency, the third one is uh, it's called Thomas Michael. Uh but Michael is uh actually the middle name of, of Thomas Himmler. Uh who was uh was the chief financial officer. Uh who was uh was the chief financial officer of of the county of uh Prince George's and who we had ironed some involvement with when I was in council because when we were trying to do the finances for the, what was the Street Sense development on a thirty-two-hundred block of uh uh Rhode Island Avenue, he was involved in trying to work out the numbers. And he's uh pretty much a a numbers, you know, kind of a numbers cruncher and a, you know, nuts and bolts kind of guy. And uh the positive on him is that this, he's not like at all doing everything. This is, he's just focusing on ARPA money and how the money should be used. Uh the negative is he's also being used by uh uh Hyattsville, and right now they hired him to do it. And uh he's also has worked at College Park. So the only thing I wanna add was, you know, that uh Thomas Michael is basically focused on all this. The other two are like uh kind of uh lobbying firms, which is one part of their activity. Uh all the numbers are, you know, equivalent uh in terms of how much it would cost the city. So I think they're all right in the ballpark. And you know, I think after we give some impact to Mr. Kamali, he maybe he gives, you know, a recommendation at the next meeting and we vote on one of them. Uh it's hard, you know, but that's my info knowingly. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Jimmy. Uh I'm gonna go to Luke and then come back to Jared. Would that work, Jared? Give a little bit more time. Go ahead, Luke. Floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Um yeah, I looked at the um applications. Um you know, I don't have a lot of experience in this area, but I did find um I did like Thomas Michael's proposal better than the rest. Um and it it just came down to the scope of services. As Jimmy said, the cost is the same for everybody. Um the scope of services that um in Thomas Michael's proposal, he sort of calls out the things that are gonna be required for reporting on ARPA, you know, just things like the 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 project management, the treasury reporting pro portal. Um they're gonna monitor all the deadlines. Um they're gonna assist presentations um to relevant stakeholders. They're gonna do a a whole bunch of stuff that really, to me, sounded more like they're gonna walk us through all the reporting. I was a little bit nervous about the other two applications. Um their scopes of services seemed rather broad, and they seemed more consulty-like. So you call them and they talk to you about their opinion and what you should do. And on this, I want a little bit more handholding. Um and it looked like that's what Thomas Michael was gonna do. But I, you know, that again, that's just from reading the proposals. That was kind of the takeaway I get. And hearing what Jimmy said, though, reinforces that a bit. I like that Thomas Michael is focused on this. This is what he's doing. Um if we're a client of one of the other twos, we're one of, I don't know, twenty or fifty clients they may have, and they're focused on other work. Um I'm not sure how much of that handholding they're gonna get. And we need that, frankly, because we just don't have a lot of staff. Um and then just generally for the public. Um so, you know, obviously, we're getting the five-point-four million dollars. The idea is we wanna make sure we don't risk losing any of it because we do something wrong in reporting. So we wanna hire a consultant off the top. And if that costs us thirty thousand dollars over the next three years, you know, fine, that's nothing compared to the five-point-four million that we wanna make sure we don't lose. Um so that's why it's imperative that we do this right away. And as Jimmy mentioned earlier, it's imperative that we have that help because they'll be able to tell us what projects are gonna qualify and what don't.
Thirty thousand a year, just for correction.
Guys, Luke has the, Luke has the floor.
So even if it's a, even if it's a hundred grand, you know, that that that's nothing compared to the the money we're getting um over the next three years. So um, you know, I I I think that's where my direction's headed, towards Thomas and Michael, and sort of reaffirmed by by Jimmy. Um so if we are making a recommendation to Kamali, my only um, you know, other thought is that let's get this is, let's get a decision made as soon as possible. And and Kamali, as the city manager, has the ability to do that and and get this done. Thank you.
Thank you, Luke. Uh Jared, the floor is yours?
Yeah, no, I just uh I just wanted to reiterate how important this is. I, you know, I've been at both a federal agency grantor and a local agency grantee and federal compliance is no small thing. It's very complex. Um it's really critical, and there's a lot of um there's a lot of requirements attached to it. Um, you know, that we are not, you know, we are, we are not certainly released from because we're a small city or limited staff. And the responsibilities are the same whether we're small or large. So I, you know, having someone with enough experience, um you know, on the management, the oversight, compliance is gonna be really really critical. And I I wanna say this is doubly critical because any of the follow-on funding, uh Luke, you know, you you mentioned that earlier, a lot of the proposals in the infrastructure bill, there won't be like formula money dropping down to the city. Again, there'll be a lot of opportunities for us to compete for money and ask for uh submit, apply for projects. And, you know, if we if we flub, you know, if we have compliance problems with ARPA money, it's gonna make it a lot harder to ever uh pursue other federal resources. So I just wanna say, you know, this is important in general, but it's also important going into the future as more resources come available. So that, to that end, yeah, again, co- yeah, commit consistent with what um Luke and um Luke and Jimmy have been echoing, I do feel uh most comfortable, uh if you had to ask, of the firm that is really the most focused on um us and also on compliance and um you know, oversight and and, you know, less of the ancillary uh front and stuff. So uh which would be Thomas Michael. Thank you.
So thank you, council members. Um I'll tell you where I'm at. Um I'd be interested to buy both of them in case you guys wanna ask them questions. Um a lot of the community involvement, we basically had taken up on ourselves. So it's given us a little bit of room also to select someone, right? Um I think out of the three, O'Malley was the one that I wasn't quite there. Uh the other two, um, you know, they're basically the same scope. Um I like them both, the other two. So I haven't fully decided on which one it is as far as um Michael and Thomas and uh Greenwell. So that's where I'm at with those two. And pretty much echoing the same thing. So one, um yes, the funding to pay for this will come out of the ARPA funds. So that's one. And it is in our best interest to make sure that this funding comes from there um and that we're accounted for every single penny. This was not handed to us. It had to take a lot of work and effort at the national level. Local level, you're talking about our MML, our uh National League of Cities, um the various groups, local progress, our county, as, you know, state, all them fighting to make sure that this money was also um bringing down in the municipalities themselves, all the way down to municipal level. So that was the biggest thing that said, hey, you guys, you know, there's a lot of big, small municipalities. You guys don't have the staffing. You guys probably don't have the knowledge, and you guys will fund this much money. Because the seventy-five percent of our budget, and Luke was very clear and even mentioning, usually our budget is a lot of uh staffing and and some program, but nothing like we have here, right? So it is important for us to be able to utilize the fund. Definitely, I agree with you guys. It has to be more of like a handheld. Um we need to make sure that uh we have somebody that's dotting the i's and crossing the t's. And that's the reason why I'm leaning towards them too, to figure out where we're at um with this process. So we could, uh then as far as the next step, we could always direct Mr. Kamali to speak to them. And and if we have any questions or concern about any of them, and we could bring them to our next legislative session for us to like hear them out and then uh decide to vote there. Uh that is an option for us to do, but we will have to vote on the contract publicly to make sure we are transparent as we possibly can be. This is the reason why this is just a conversation. It was a little too late to bring them in. But I wanna make sure that we're fully uh of it. Hold on, Jimmy. Uh that we'll also make sure we're fully aware. Um Mr. Kamali, do you have anything else to add before I open the to the council for the second round?
No, I appreciate that. And I look forward to get this one, you know, resolved as soon as possible.
Okay, Jimmy, we're going to the second.
Due to the reporting that we have to do by October the thirty-first. And we wanna make sure that, you know, we're not gonna be late. Even though this reporting, there is no, not that much to do, but I wanna make sure that we have, you know, consulting on the side in case to get the direction and make sure that we are in compliance.
Thank you, Mr. Kamali. Uh Jimmy, we're playing the second round. Go ahead.
Uh I I would maybe recommend that uh not bring them, that Mr. Kamali uh make a recommendation if he wants to invite one of us to meet with them uh to get impact. But inviting him there, that we, he actually makes a recommendation to the council, and then we vote on it uh at the next meeting as opposed to getting them all here and asking a lot of questions. I I think it might say, as, you know, I'm concerned that we make a decision and that, you know, I would respect Mr. Kamali to make a recommendation for us. We don't have to go along with it. But, you know, that he do the work and talking to them. That's my, where I'm, where I would leave.
Okay, thank you, Jimmy. Uh Luke or Jared, do you need the the second round?
I, yeah. Thank you, Mayor. I I would just agree with Jimmy. If if Kamali makes a recommendation and it doesn't depart from what we've talked about tonight, I think, Selena, you made sure we had a budget line item already in the budget for this type of stuff. So he can make that decision and get this hired this week, and we don't have to come even back for a vote. So I'm I'm on board with that direction.
There's a million dollars in the uh line item already, and we decided to do for that in a specific purpose to make sure we could edit, to add whatever amount came up to it. But wanna make sure we had money uh approved so that if we need to move something fast, um such as hiring somebody, it it wa- it was there in approval up because budget amendments take a little longer than, you know, than people, people expect. Okay, Ja- thank you, Luke. Uh Jared, we're good?
Yeah, nothing more. Thank you.
All right, perfect. So, Mr. Kamali, let's uh review um and give your recommendation to the council, and we'll vote on the next legislative meeting. I'm finding the way, but it will have to be voted public. So make sure we're transparent and people know who our person is. Okay?
Thank you so much.
We could move forward with that, correct? Shake your head. Yes? All right. Thank you, council, for your, for you, for your great feedback. Uh let me see. Next one, item number seven, discussion to amend FY twenty-two budget um to reflect appropriations of American we uh plan the ARPA funds. Uh so once again, we mentioned there is the line item in the budget under grants that discuss um the the ARPA funds under uh funding coming. And there's a million dollars in the line item at this this point. And we need to obviously add the rest of the money um um to make sure reflects, one, we already have it, what we're getting in total, so that we're able to utilize those funds. And they're accounted for in our budgeting reporting. Um in the same time, making sure they keep their own line item together because we will have to do in my card, um, single audits if we spend more than seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand per ARPA rules. So we need to make sure all that is accounted for. So I will open the floor to Mayor and Council. Um any feedback, if it's a move forward to the budget amendment to include that? Yes, again, we could move over to this point. If you have any question, please let us know. Um so Jimmy, have your mic open? We could go Jimmy, Luke, Jared, if you guys want. Jimmy, go ahead.
That's fine with me.
Okay, Luke?
Yeah, I'm good with that. Just increasing the line item to reflect the money that we actually have this year. And then you'd have to also increase on the expenditure side. Um put a line item on the expenditure side to to so it equals out. And I'm good with that. So and then just so the public's aware, that just allocates the money. Um so we have it. We're not, like Selena said earlier tonight, we're not making decisions on spending the money on stuff yet. So making that.
Yeah, it's just procedure at this point to be able to utilize it. Uh Jared?
Yeah, no, nothing additional. I agree with Jimmy and uh Luke.
Okay, so, Mr. Kamali, you have uh support to move forward to doing the budget amendment for FY twenty to um reflect the ARPA funds, okay?
Thank you so much.
All right, perfect. So item number eight, discussion on next steps on ARPA community input. That is thirty minutes, but uh open up the floor. Uh you're gonna go we're gonna go Luke, Jimmy, Jared? Go ahead.
Thank you, Selena. Um so this is a really good um point of discussion. So we've got, obviously, we have a better sense now of some of the stormwater projects and the price tag that we have on that. Um Selena mentioned, you know, especially in the South Side, we're gonna have to talk to South Side residents, see if that's something they want. Um I think we've heard from Perry Street residents, we know they they want it on on their street. So I'm not as concerned there. But I think um Arundel Road, um Thirty First Street, I know there are folks on Thirty Second Street that are very much want to see that done on Thirty Second Street. They've had a lot of water issues there between Taylor and Shepherd. So I know they're very interested. Um but the bigger question is sort of how do you split up the infrastructure versus aid? Um and, you know, I'm, we just have to have those discussions with the community as as much as possible. And I'm not sure if anybody has um, you know, ideas on how to set up the cadence for that. Um I think that, you know, we may just wanna at least tack on, you know, one community meeting in October, maybe two or one in October, one in November um to get feedback. But that's just me sort of throwing the idea out there. We may have more information with the, when when the consultant's hired, and maybe the consultant says you have a little bit of more time here. You can take it slower. Um I don't know, those are just sort of me spitballing ideas here, and I'm interested to see what everybody else has to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Luke. Jimmy, Jared? See, I give Jimmy the mic, and he like mutes himself now. Wow, Jimmy. On mute.
Okay, good.
Go ahead. Be ready to go.
So I I think this is a good discussion. So I I would suggest, and I'm volunteering uh to put together, you know, how you have rolling agenda, uh a rolling list of the different thoughts that we came up with. People like put together a whole list of, you know, of proposals uh and kind of, one is go through, you know, stuff that came in the chat, stuff that came into council. Uh and then also, once we have kind of getting just a list, kind of, you know, sharing with our consultant to see, you know, how much of this is appropriate or not. Uh and then kind of, you know, when we have a list, try and start kind of filtering out, you know, you know, how do we move on different items in the list? Like one of the things I was excited with, like a crisis management person. You know, maybe that means working with, you know, you know, North Brentwood and Brentwood about doing that. And there were lots of other uh thoughts that came up. So I would suggest uh that we, and again, I volunteer to do that, but if somebody else is the city manager, I know he's overwhelmed. We actually put together like a, just, it's almost like a brainstorming list of what came out, you know, including the stormwater management and like one, and then under one A, the the different projects. And then two, you know, came up with rental relief. Number three, I heard was ADA, uh you know, kind of compliance stuff in our parks. Four was, you know, I'm I'm just kind of, you know, what I heard, you know, on the call and kind of put together a list. And then kind of looking over the list, sharing with some of our kind of consultant to see are these things are even appropriate? And then kind of, kind of try and delve more deeper and share with the community about what other things might be on the list. And then we have to some point prioritize what we think are important. So that's my uh, the first thing is to put together a list and then start looking over the list. Bring out to give me an adding to the list and then kind of, kind of prioritizing. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Jimmy, Jared?
Yeah, I mean, no, nothing additional past what I've heard from Luke and um, I mean, I think, you know, having an opportunity for additional input. Um again, just, you know, I've said this before, obviously, but um, you know, there's we've had, I I've got a lot of resident input, uh, you know, in the in addition to what was in the community meeting. Um you know, lots of great ideas. There are things that folks are definitely asking for that are not not eligible, or, you know, there are existing resources that we need to make sure folks are aware of and able to tap into uh from the state and from the county. So um, you know, just making sure that in, you know, additional community conversations, we're framing those, um we're framing those points as well. So um, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that at least for me, it's like having our consultant like write up a small of like, you know, what can be fulfilled or not. Um I know I read it through like on Saturday and stuff like that, and some of the things that came out still, like I know we can't do much, right? We could support certain things like, you know, the parks for the county, that's the county um more than we can. Um but um I think overall, like, my my idea for this point wasn't just, oh, draw a list and stuff like that, but also categorize it to make sure we're hitting different ones. What I was able to gather was the document for the two-hundred-and-fifty, you know, that two-hundred-and-fifty plus um thousand people in a population. Basically, the document describes more or less some of the points, and it divides them, like, you know, for housing, for rental, let's say, for businesses, for schools. So that way we could more or less have a guide, and I could share that with you guys, have a guide of the different points that need to be. Because even talking to um Booze's brother, Margaret, um fam, actually, uh when it came to uh the schools and that these are also needed for the schools and things that are, you know, also, uh we have a Brooke who has submitted. Right? You're talking about programs to be able to work with. Right? You're talking about programs to be able to work with our our youth who have been severely impacted when it comes to literacy and also math. Right? So those two things like are very directly COVID related that haven't, you know, had, you know, Brooke touched on it some of it. I know math has been something that a lot of parents have been asking me about, saying, hey, we have a lot of kids that need help with math. How do you guys like engage a program? I know the schools have something like that, so might be like teaming up with them. Also, outdoor classroom space, um, that is definitely needed for both of our schools. I know there's been a lot of work. So all of that does falls into the ARPA funding when it comes to be able to access and be able to leverage the needs are in the community. So some of them we're gonna be able to work with, um, go ahead and pair up with. But I want to make sure this whole entire discussion education is not out of the equation because that's where um, not just our, you know, future generation, but present generation is having a lot of problems with. And right now, the virtual schooling, you know, there were a lot of challenges. So the PTOs are gonna be coming with proposals, I believe, um, Pam will be able to present in behalf of them. So a lot of things that kind of Jimmy, yes, and full support for you to start working on the list. Uh, we'll separate it by category to make sure we're we're uh we're working on what needs to be done. I want to make sure, I know there's a lot of, I got a lot of um, you know, calls and emails and texts for residents being like, this is just gonna be a hundred percent infrastructure and you're just gonna throw like fifty thousand, we're all gonna have to fight for that. And I told them like, no, that's not the idea. There's funding that is gonna go around us, so so have the business and different things. But the reality of it is, it's like, we need to be able to expand on certain things that maybe the county is doing. And one of them, like I mentioned to you guys, was like potentially hiring a second social service coordinator. Because the program might be beautiful, but we need to be able to have somebody to be able to work to make sure that's reaching out to the community and be able to not just apply, but be able to walk them through the process for many things. So one, have the consultant do a summary of the, you know, the things that we can, the various categories that we could utilize the money, if we share the document with you guys, right? And start thinking about how um, how this money is gonna be split. As far as community conversation, um, if you notice on the agenda, this is something that I, some of you guys were here early enough. Now on the agenda, when it says like upcoming events, it's gonna be part of the agenda from now on. So see, notice how it says like, you know, the mayor's conversation, if we want or we're to have a separate meetings, we'll go ahead and add in there. But anything so that we have like paper trail of the different things that are coming ahead of time to advertise them, but to deliberately make space to make sure we are talking about the ARPA funds and various. So I'm looking forward to seeing the consultant creating a survey to outreach the community members, even if it's electronically. Uh, make sure that, you know, we're working in a way to present to the other stakeholders, right? But at the same time, like the communications meetings continue to happen, even if I have to do another Saturday meeting. Or as part of like where agenda looks like for October and November, because remember this is just like for this month, but it's like twelve months in between when the next funding is happening. So this is not like the do it and all and be all when it comes to the conversation. We might have to eventually do like bulk, like saying this is much we're gonna spend on this category and then we break it down to make it a little bit easier for us, but that's something that we could do. So Jimmy, I support you start working on on on, you know, separating some of the categories uh with Kamali, I'll work to make sure we could get the summary done. And other outlets to have people because it was, uh, you know, not everybody's willing, you know, can be here at nine o'clock on a virtual meeting. I mean, my my daughter is supposed to. We're working on her going to bed right now. Uh, but saying that it needs to be another outlet to make sure we're getting feedback from the community that don't feel neglected. So I think, you know, especially for both the mayor's conversations, um, I will be like, we'll also be addressing ARPA and getting gathering ideas as well on on those time slots. Uh, Luke, look at your schedule, figure out if a time works better for you, we could uh hold a third meeting that day. Because both meetings at this point are DA, but if there's a third, a a certain time that you could um join us or a different day, let us know.
On what day?
The eighth. It's a Saturday.
Isn't the eighth a Friday? Saturday?
Sorry, the ninth.
Okay, the ninth. Um, so Meg has, so I'm with the kids until almost, well, till almost two o'clock that day. Uh, so I could do a meeting in the afternoon that day, about two overnight?
We could do that because I have Jimmy, I have Jared, and I could have you, and we're basically trying to like triangulate in different parts of the city. So that would also shows that we are, you know, the same thing as before, like we done, like, you know, we'll fly the block around, say we're here. And then have people come over and give us, um, you know, talk about whatever we're doing, but at the same time, be able to um get any feedback we have uh from them. So that will, we're able to triangulate as much as we can, but that'd be like three extra meeting, three extra mini meetings. And Jared found a mistake and yours finishes at two thirty, right? So Luke, we can uh do the next one from three to three to three to five. All right? So let's, I'll give you guys, I'll work with the three of you guys on the calendar to figure out where we're gonna be, so that way we're a little bit far away from each other. And in the meetings, any other, if if war one or war two is closer to that that spot, then they could join if if they choose to. This is not like they, if, you know, if people would love to hear Jimmy, they could come from different parts of the city where where we will take them all in, right? Uh, but yeah, so let's figure that time slot, let's get that in the book so that we at least have a little more feedback and a little more information for the community and and move forward. By then, ideally where we have the consultant. So we could have their uh their input and anything else they might be able to provide um for us. Okay? And council members, any, Jimmy, I see your hand up. Uh, go ahead.
It's just, uh, I'll put together, uh, I'll start working on a a a document, which will be a shared document on Google, which people can add. We'll just start kind of putting down things that people have either uh chatted uh to us or um uh, or, you know, or wrote to us. Uh, I would only ask Mayor, maybe that some people are writing the whole council and maybe the ma- me, the mayor, city manager could respond and say, thank you for your input. You know, so we don't all respond, you know?
Yeah, I think there's a lot of confusion, Jimmy, a hundred percent. I think well, one of us is gonna have to answer because sometimes they feel like if the city manager answers, we're ignoring them. And I also realize that some people feel like if one of us answer, usually for the community, if one of us answers, they, you know, the person takes the lead. And then we we follow up with somebody else, but uh there there's a lot of emails coming through for for you to give four thank yous. But I mean, uh, we'll work through it. So I I saw an email that came in uh with some questions I was I'm working on answering. But we'll work through it. So Mr. Kamali, yeah, if you acknowledge all of them at least, like it cuts some time. And then if any of the council members or mayor needs to add something, we'll go ahead and add it, okay? That would definitely help us. And I know that's extra work for you and we appreciate you dearly and um.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Okay, perfect. Okay, so if there's nothing else to touch on this point, or yes, Luke?
Yeah, sorry. I, you know, I know we have a a lot of time and I I know it's late. I just do want to slow down a little bit and talk through a little bit more the plan here because um I think it's important to chat about this a little bit more. And so I I just can kind of kind of repeat back what we're thinking here. And I just want everybody to take a close look at their calendars and 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 think about this. So so this is the week of September twentieth, okay? Um, so Mr. Kamali is gonna make a decision on a consultant. Um, you know, let's just pretend that doesn't happen and get under contract until October one. Let's just give ourselves time there. So now we're looking.
I think we have to vote on that.
I don't think we have to vote on that contract because there's a line item in the budget for it. Do we, is, am I wrong about that, Selena?
So we're gonna vote on it, Luke, just to make sure we're transparent on who we decided to pick. Right? So there is a line item, but I think it's important for us to vote so that the community is fully aware who we're selecting.
That's October second, and we'll vote in first meeting.
Okay, so we'll vote October fifth. So then that's October fifth. So so October fifth, we'll vote, then the con- the the contract might not get done until October eighth or the week of October eleventh, which is a short week, it's only four days. Um, with Indigenous Peoples' Day. So now we're looking at having the the the, we're gonna have a meeting on October ninth with residents. Um, so we'll get feedback there. That's good. Um, before we have a consultant on board, um, do we want to get this list out to the community? And say, this is the list of ideas we have thus far. We're having meetings on October ninth. You know, we want to hear your feedback. Do we want to get that list out to the community next week or the week of October fourth?
I think that as long as we're clear that that is not the final that we still have to go through to figure out if it's doable, it's fine. I just don't want to give the wrong impression that if you people made it to the list, that it's a project we're gonna carry through because there's a lot of more specifics. Remember, everything has to be measurable and it has to be accounted for and it has to be COVID nineteen related. And I think that's that's where some of the, some of the things like um expanded beyond like the scope that we could cover.
Yep. Okay, so.
I think just a, just an initial list. We put it on the legislative agenda just to look at a list, not to say that's a closed list. It's that people can add things, but you know, we have just a list of things and we put on the agenda for the first work, you know, just to to look at a list.
Okay, so are we going to send the list out? So again, my question to the team. Are we gonna send, uh, and I'm sorry for kind of taking this over. I'm just gonna project management.
That's fine, go ahead.
Um, so are we gonna send a list out to the community before our next meeting on the fifth?
After the meeting.
After the meeting. So are we gonna send him uh the 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 letter out before Selena's conversations on the ninth?
I would like for it to be sent, uh, even if it's initial list. You know, prior and then on the night we could add if you guys want, but that would like if somebody doesn't seems that there's something in the list. They could come and join us at the different points for meeting them.
Okay, so here's my recommendation. Kamali, for the legislative session on Tuesday, the fifth, let's have reviewing the list of projects um that we want to share out to the community so that coming out of that meeting on the fifth, we have a final list. And we can communicate that out to residents. We can say exactly what Selena and Jimmy said. This is not a final list. We're having meetings on Saturday, the ninth. We want to invite you, invite you to it, um, to those meetings. Um, so that's gonna happen. So we're gonna send a letter and I'm gonna take notes now and send it to everybody. We're gonna send a letter out to the community on October sixth, hopefully. Um, letting them know this is not the final list, um, just feedback thus far. Um, want your input, um, invite people to Selena's meetings on the ninth. Um, so that'll be good. So that takes us to October ninth. Then we're at the next week. So now we've got the week of October eighteenth. And then we have our work session on the nineteenth. So that lines up good. So our meeting on the nineteenth will have all that feedback. Um, take feedback to meeting on the nineteenth.
But also get feedback from the consultants about things on the list that might not be appropriate.
Perfect, perfect. So after the meeting on the ninth, um, somewhere between the meeting on the ninth with residents and somewhere between our work session on the nineteenth, um, we'll give the list to the consultant um to tell us what we can spend um money on. That's good. And then so we can take the feedback from residents um and the consultants um to to our meeting on the nineteenth. Okay.
If everything works out fine, the consultants could join us in the meeting on the nineteenth, so that way they're there.
Yep, community residents can join on the nineteenth. Um, that's a good idea. Community residents um can join on the nineteenth for the discussion. Okay, and I I do we think that during that discussion on nineteenth, it would be appropriate, and Mayor, I know that you 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 mentioned this earlier, to kind of talk about potentially different buckets of funding. So we want to spend this much on aid. We're not quite sure how we want to do the aid. We want to spend this much on infrastructure. Is that an appropriate conversation for the nineteenth? What do people think about that?
So I would say add it as a yes, because that could be the first one. So put it in there and then as we get closer, we'll decide whether or not we're ready for the conversation there. So I say put everything towards that day. And that's our goal to get it. And if we don't, we will have to like schedule a meeting like few days after, whatever it is. But our point right now is to be able to um present and work on, have a working meeting that day.
Okay, that's good. So that that'll be that work session on the nineteenth. So let's keep that in mind so we don't pack that that agenda for the nineteenth. Um, and then that'll bring us to we'll have the week of the twenty fifth, Halloween's that weekend. Um, uh, do we want to have any other community meeting um that that weekend of the thirtieth? Um, or do we just want to invite people to the legislative session on November second? Um, where we'll have to look at a a a, um, probably signing off on the budget amendment that we'll introduce in October.
I I think at least Luke, like, let's um look at our calendars as well, because we need to have a meeting before, because remember on the nineteen, we need to give uh Mr. Kamali, the consultants enough like direction so that way they could fulfill the the report for the thirty first. Okay, so on the on the first, we could discuss whatever it is, but we might have to pull a meeting before if we decide to to vote on it. Or even after the work session, depending how far along we are at it, because we do a work session followed by legislative session, you know? Or wait seven days later. But I think that we need to be open to have a meeting before, because what I don't want is to have them do that report with like three days um trying to run to the thirty first. The thirty and the thirty first are Saturday and Sunday. So the reality is like they have until the twenty nine um to do it within a a working business day. So I don't want to cut it so close that if we have nothing more, we could go ahead and present whatever the final is on November first. Right? And um and move on if we need to vote on something else, right? If not, hold that meeting. Yeah.
Yeah, that means on that work session on October nineteenth, we're gonna have to have some some solid um answers for Kamali and the consultant. I think that's a good point, Selena.
Yeah, and the consultant should be able to tell us this is what's required from the report. So we know what's needed, whether or not we could carry on until November. Or if like certain things need to be like submitted in the report that require for us to um more or less have a a tendency. So it might be just that we might need to vote on on big headings instead of like, you know, that we're spending five dollars on this, you know? So we have to see what the reporting looks like in order to figure out what it looks like. So that's what it's like, you know, they will be able to guide us. So by the nineteen, Mr. Kamali, make sure that um even prior to that, if we can, what is required for the reporting so that we, Mayor and Council could know how to best um, how to best answer questions that we might need to address on that nineteen to lead forward to give you good guidance for the reporting.
Yeah. Just uh, it's my, my personal goal is that sometime by the legislative session in November, we were able to initiate it, vote on a few speci- not a final list, but a few projects that we can move forward on. So we would have discussion, and this is my, you know, nineteenth. We may not have a final list, but there are a few projects we could try and aim to try and get stuff by the legislation on the on the first session in November that we vote on a few things to get things moving. That's my my mind.
So I think we're on the same page, Jimmy. I think we want to make sure it's like, once we see what the reporting is specifically as of us, we'll be able to know whether we could wait until November first to vote because the report is on the twenty, the thirty first. Or do we need to like, um, or we need to do the decision prior? But I think that by nineteen, we should be able to clean up some of the lists and uh be able to know what projects we could move forward to, at least for the first part of the ARPA funds and what's needed if, you know, so like I said, unless we know what's asked for the report, I cannot tell you um at this point, do they want to see what the two versions of it look like, or they're more focused on what we're working on this quarter and we could add and move from now on. But the idea is to get as much as we can closer to the nineteen. And if another meeting needs to happen, um, after that, have your sk- your calendar ready. So Jimmy, you're gonna be working on the list. The the nicer the list is, the better for all of us. So Google Docs definitely will work for so that we could fit it in in real life um information, so it helps us out as well. Thank you, Jimmy. All right, Jared, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I I I'm making a document right now with some dates and all the stuff we're talking about. I'll share it with everybody. Um, uh, and um, we'll go from there. Sorry, Selena.
No, you're good. I want to make sure, Jared, I did not uh ignore you over there. Are we doing, Jared?
Oh, no, I was I was just scratching, sorry.
I'm so like, he's raising his hand everywhere. All right, perfect. Mr. Kamali, any feedback on this list that you want to provide right now, so as we're building it?
No, I'm fine. I'm okay. As long as I get the information from Luke and then we can move forward.
Okay. Perfect. Uh, Luke, anything else you need from us to finalize dates, times or lists?
I think that's, I think that's really good, guys. I really appreciate um Selena, you let me do that and then everybody else's feedback. I think that um sets, I I think that this this puts us in a really good place to 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 move in the right direction.
I think it's funny that you thought you were gonna get away with not doing a program uh planning and management.
No, I love it. I love it. I love, I love it. Thanks.
Luke, I know what your strengths are, so you better believe I was gonna come to you like, put something together and adopt to move forward with it.
Thank you. I love it. Anytime you want to use me, I'll do it.
Yeah, you're you're designated like, you know, for that, you know? Okay, so uh, Council, any other feedback you want to give Luke, at least on this original document? Uh, Luke, are you gonna make this into a Google Docs for accessibility so any of us could use it or is it a, what kind of document is it?
I'm doing it in Word, but I can put it into a Google document. That's fine. Is Word okay for everybody?
Yeah, Word is good.
Okay.
Yeah, put it on Word and Docs so that way we could like many changes. Mr. Kamali, add all those days to the calendars. And I'm thinking we might end up changing the mayor's conversations to mayor's conversations on ARPA. So that way we could like, and anything else they want to talk to, but that way they know it's up in center. And also for reporting, uh, Council, uh, County Council Member Vice Chair David Tabarez, thank you for joining us tonight. We definitely appreciate all your support and and thank you for your kind words. All right, so Luke, anything else you need for us on this point?
No, I'm good. I'm gonna finish up this letter, go on mute and this document, go on mute and send it to everybody.
Okay, Mr. Kamali, for that Saturday, the ninth, can you make sure at least one of the staff members is with us? So that way they could be in charge of taking notes and, um, and make sure we have any, because, uh, we want to make sure we could turn all these documents in. Um, properly and move forward, uh, with it. Uh, and also I know we have like different, I have different points with each of you guys, but you guys could definitely, uh, join and listen. You cannot make any comment, but very, very careful about. Okay, so Mayor and Council, thank you so much. Well, Council and staff, thank you so much. For moving us forward to that direction. And now we're moving over to the legislative calendar.
No, you missed something.
What is it?
I think you missed, and you missed, uh, did you take off the calendar? We had a thing about the charter change.
Oh, so this is not the final version that I, I said. I must have missed one. I apologize.
Okay, not a problem. Uh, we had like number nine was, uh.
Can, can we do this one quickly, Jimmy? Because basically giving it to you guys.
I can do it quickly if no one wants to say anything.
I'm gonna do the calendar, wait.
Oh, calendar quickly, sure.
Council, you guys have the calendar. Look at it. There's only one day we need to change because if, uh, it's a, it's a holiday, you guys see it there? So please look in the calendar and give me, uh, not right now, but you could send to me an email. What, uh, day you would like to fulfill for that meeting? Okay, uh, the day is just like the other one regular day has already been on, but May third. Is, um, it's a holiday, so I need to make sure that we're very respectful and not, um. Not have a meeting that night because, um, quite a few of community members have expressed that. We haven't been very careful, uh, but we make sure we took care of it as September, uh, seventh, we did move our meeting. Because it was Rosh Hashanah, so I want to make sure, uh, we were a little, we, we're working on being more inclusive. So look at your calendars for May third. That's the one that we will have to change either to the four. But send me a day so that we can move it up to calendar. So ahead of time, we know that's the day we're selecting. Okay? Um, Jimmy, the floor is yours for the next item. I don't have it at the screen. Uh, we were gonna talk about charter amendment. Uh, regarding some members', um, vacancies.
Sure, uh, I'll share my, I'll share a screen. Uh, we have to, I mean, we're talking about having a charter commission. Uh, and I think we have to put that on the agenda at the next work session. We don't want to keep that. Uh, too long, uh, but I think that's gonna take a long-term process. Uh, time, maybe it could be two years before they come up with recommendations and a couple of, uh, charter changes, uh. I think we have to move on quicker. And the first is a question of special elections. And, um, uh, I propose something and I'll share if I have the writing of it. Uh, here it is. Can everybody see it? So basically what it does is it proposes down here, there are two proposals, but I think this is the one I would like best. Is that if there's a, a vacancy. That, that is more than six months before the next general election. The vacancy shall be filled by a special election. If it occurs within a hundred and eighty days of the next general election, the position shall remain vacant. Uh, some cities do that. Some other cities do, I'm putting up where between, uh. Hundred eighty days and ninety days, they appoint somebody. Uh, and between ninety days and zero days, they have a special election. Uh, I tend to think that it's cleaner just to say that if there's a. Uh, if there's a vacancy more than six months before, we should have a special election. If there's, uh, nothing before six months, we should just keep it as a vacancy. Uh, having somebody fill a position with only four or five months before an election is a lot of. Kind of learning, puts that person a little bit of advantage. Uh, my tendency is that we should just, you know, keep it vacant, uh. If it's, uh, less than six months. Uh, so I'm proposing, uh, option number two, that we, uh. If there's an election, a vacant, I think it's undemocratic. Uh, I know I'm, you know, kind of, kind of advantage of that, that if, if, uh, there's a vacancy. You know, almost two years, that there should be a special election so people can decide who they want to be. The councilperson for that, uh, for that ward. So that's my proposal. Uh, it's a, I, I'm proposing that if we think this is a straw vote, but this is a good idea. That we kind of, uh, send the language to our attorney. Um, to review and also send the language to the Board of Elections finding comments. And that we move ahead over on it at the legislative session.
So Jimmy, because it's a charter amendment, it'll take more than just one work session.
Oh, yeah, 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 I know. More than one legislative session.
So not work, more than one work session as well. Uh, but also it's like, you know, usually what the way it works is like even before sending it to the lawyers, I would like to send it to the Board of Elections. Because they're gonna be able to carry that. Uh, so just procedure wise, I know you cannot go from here to the legislative session. That definitely is not gonna be a no. I have to read on it, but I think it has, it takes at least two legislative sessions. If there is support to go to the first one, if it's not, it might take a little longer. But I'm gonna open the, so procedure wise, this will not be in the next legislative session. It takes a little long and before it goes to the lawyer, I would like to take it to the Board of Elections. Procedure. I'm gonna open the floor up to, um, Jared, followed by Luke. Jared?
I'm gonna stop sharing unless people want to see it.
Yeah, can, sorry, can you pop that back up?
Leave it up, Jimmy. It's a little bit easier to see it. If you could, I know. Don't take it away from us, Jimmy.
I have all my other things I have to, uh, okay, I think that's it. Okay.
Okay, go ahead. So Jared, the floor is yours.
Yeah, sorry, I was just waiting for that to come back up.
Yeah, Jimmy, don't be stingy. Share the screen.
So Jimmy, Jimmy, sorry, can you, can you, what am I specifically responding to here?
Say it again.
What am I specifically responding to here?
Oh, the proposal is that if I, I put to recommend date, two options, but I'm recommending. Uh, the option number two, which is if there's a vacancy, uh, more than a hundred and eighty days. And we have a special election. If there's a vacancy, uh, less than a hundred and eighty days before the next election. We keep the position vacant until, uh, uh, until the election. I, I've looked at other cities. Some cities have an, another option. Uh, which should I do to option one, which I put down, which is that if it's, uh. Between a hundred and eighty days and ninety days, there'll be an appointment following the same procedure we do now. Uh, and if it's between ninety days and zero days, there'd be left vacant. So option one is more than a hundred and eighty days election, or option, let me go. Option one is, uh, more than a hundred and eighty days, special election between a hundred and eighty days and ninety days. Appointment between ninety days and zero days vacant. Option two is more than a hundred and eighty days, special election. Uh, and less than a hundred and eighty days, keep the, uh, thing vacant. Ob, ob, obviously, option three is status quo. So that makes.
A hundred and eighty, you're talking about six months, Jimmy. Is that what it is? Because a hundred and eighty days does not read especially for your, if you're doing between business and regular day. So it's more, more or less six months.
It's sixty, yeah, thirty day, yes, but a hundred, since you never, no, yeah, it's. Hundred and eighty days is equivalent to six months, more or less, but that's, technically, it would be, you know. We'd have to figure out which is the thirty-one days, but it'd be a hundred and eighty days.
Okay, um, yeah, no, I, I just kind of thinking through this and I, and I, I love the reflections of other folks on council, because you all have served. Uh, much longer than I have as, as city council members. And Jimmy, I know you're gonna say you haven't, but, uh, this time, but certainly in some, so. If coming into this like. Appointing someone for, i- if you have a period of less than six months, appointing someone for six months, you know. For remaining six months is not, um. It makes more sense to me just to leave that open, just because of the learning curve, um, for anyone that has not served before. Um, I do agree that our current scenario of, um, appointing someone if there's a vacancy with. Um, you know, for an up to year period is a very long time. It is the. Length of a regular term of some other city councils like Brentwood or Chevrolet. So I, I fully endorse the idea of a. Special election process, um, agreed that, and I, I like the approach of it's over a hundred and eighty days, we. You know, we, we do a, we do a special election, um, you know, if it is, uh. Uh, under a hundred and eighty days, we, we don't, uh, you know, we don't necessarily. Fill it, although it, in my head, if I'm thinking about this. You know, if you had someone resign with eight months left of their four-year term, I, you, you have an election for a very short. Very short council period, so, um, but in, in general, like fully, as I said before, I'm fully in support of. Something that gives the opportunity for a democratic process to select a council member. Um, if there is a vacancy and I like, I like the way you've laid this out. Um, maybe one question for the rest of you. Um, it, a- and I, I don't have the charter in front of me, so. If there's a vacancy, um, if we leave the position vacant, we can still. You know, still achieve a, a quorum. Uh, for example, like what if, I mean, I don't know if this would ever happen. What if you were happen to have like. Two vacancies, are you, are you able to, is this gonna create a scenario where we cannot appoint someone to fill? An open, um, the needed number of seats to take action on city business?
Yes.
Is that, is that a confirmation? Are you acknowledging that comment?
No, I am acknowledging. So let's say two, if you guys see, so two things, if, if we run the council by four. Um, automatically, um, two of us in a room talking about something could. Potentially be viewed as, um, an open meeting. Number two, if you have two vacancies on the floor, that means you only have three people. So if one of us will have to miss the meeting or cannot sign something, uh, we will not breach, um. We will not get the things that we need. And so we will have to talk to the lawyer, but it becomes a little bit, um. A little bit tricky. Uh, yeah, so when it comes to.
It sounds like it works very well if we have only one vacancy at a time. If we're in a decision where we have two. It could potentially create a problem of getting business done in the city. If we cannot fill those seats because of, you know, say, you know, say the, the six month, eight, a hundred and eighty day vacancy rule. Okay, just, just something for, I think it's worth for a city lawyer to, to look at under that proposal.
Thank you, Jared. Uh, Luke, floor is yours.
Thank you. Um, yeah, the, I, 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 I think I like, I think it was option. One where if it's more than three months but less than six months, we appoint somebody. Because I don't want to leave. If, if there's only four of us and there's a two-two tie in the budget, you know, what happens? Um, and I'm just a little nervous about that dynamic. Um, that could be the constitutional lawyer in me thinking about the worst case scenario. Um, and you'd hope that people would figure it out and not keep a split, but you know, I, I don't know what happens in that instance. Um, and so that's the first thing. And so I think I'm, I, I like option one better. Um, because you only risk the vacancy for the last three months, which I guess you could still have. That is, you could still be voting on a budget, so that's still. Could be an issue. Um, but I hear what you're saying, Jimmy, about somebody having a, um, uh, an upper hand. Um, uh, you know, maybe that's something for the mayor and council, the existing mayor and council to take into consideration when they make their appointment. That they, that they, that they try to find somebody, um, who's, who's. Kind of wants to find somebody else or doesn't want to run again. Um, and so, you know, maybe that's how you ward off that potential problem is, is relying on folks to make that good decision. Um, the other thing, I just want to echo what Selena said. I do want the Board of Elections to take a look at this, because this is putting work on their hands and. I want them to tell us whether they think this is all doable. And if they tell us it's doable, then I, I'm good. But I think I'm, I'm leaning towards option one.
Thank you, Luke. Um, so I'll tell you guys where I'm at. Out of all of you guys, I'm the only one that has run for election every other year. Okay, and I'll tell you this, it's not just a lot of work, but it's very draining. And now you're asking for somebody to run for election for one year. Um, if our pool is small, even with the two-year, uh, running, it's gonna get even smaller with the one year. And this is, uh, yeah, so in a one, uh, one vacancy, uh, scenario. A lot of this will work, but it's a two, uh, two vacancies. It might not work. The other thing is like definitely a hundred percent for the Board of Elections to take a look at it, because we all have. Yes, so we all have run to certain extent, you know, like, um. You guys know there's at least thirty days that, you know, once they take like your application, thirty days for them to do whatever else they need to do. When it comes to Board of Elections, they open it up to people to want to run thirty days even before that. So before the election days open up, uh, thirty days, you have thirty days to apply. Um, and then they close it and then they have thirty days to do whatever else work. That's without counting, uh. They're having to get information from the county, make sure they get everything they need to get, contracts and everything else, so. More or less for an election to take place is gonna be at least three to six months, depending. Heisman just had their election, uh, uh, what, who used to be forward, um. Kevin, uh, Kevin Ward, who ran for mayor, he was a former council member then, uh, when, um. The mayor council, uh, the mayor of Heisman left. He was, um, um, he was voter appointed, I'm not even sure, but the point is like he was voted by the community was, um, within the council of anything, right? So when he won for election in May, they just had their election last week. So their ruling is they have. A hundred and eighty days or something along those lines to have enough time to have another election. So if we have something very similar to that, that gives at least our Board of Elections three to six months to be able to conduct an election. So if you already have that, that means that if they make three to, they say the most minimum, they will need at least two months, right? But we have to ask them what realistically is for them between printing the forms, getting the team together and everything else, right? Even if you do that, uh, right now, what we could definitely do is either A, right? If let's say somebody lives, you know, af- after, um, within the, within less than so many months after the last election. You could go ahead and appoint and then they have to run for the next election if that's where they need to go, right? Um, and we've had done that in the back, in the, in the back when Tracy left. Um, that's how Luke and I, uh, ran at the same time, right? Were different positions. So the way basically where, uh, Tracy left somewhere in January, February, that opened up some space. They got a, what traditionally has happened is like they get a formal council member to step in to help with the budget. And then they exit and do whatever they need to do, right, with their lives. But that gave some room for that way a person to be appointed. Um, work through the budget, work through some of the, uh, you know, the elections and then pass a baton to whoever won. So I'm thinking that even if it's a year, a year is maybe more doable, but you're asking somebody to run for a one-year term. Uh, because, um, for the most part, depending which of the terms it is. Uh, for one year, may, maybe two, so maybe, yeah, a hundred percent go to Board of Elections, figure out what's doable for them, because in the case. We have two openings in the same year, that means you, you, based on what you, you're writing, you will have to have two special elections. Um, done, regardless whether it's like, um, and so bear that in mind. The case of like two members of council not being there is there, and I don't want to take away from any future council. The possibility to appoint somebody six months in. And I'll tell you this. Me being mayor and trying and doing my work while my seat was open, it was a lot of work on me. And if another seat of you guys, uh, comes open. Usually like I, when I done it's like I have to try to step in to try to help, but also means like it's extra work on, on me or the team. So we might be like, oh, six months, we don't need no one, but ultimately somebody has to fill in that gap. If now you have one council member, uh, dealing with everything that happens. And what residents usually do is like they just come, you know, and get the help through the mayor and that puts extra weight on the other person. So. I'm not for, for a special election, but one that makes sense. Um, I don't want to have a special election every six months if we be, or if it's a seven month. If it's a seven month and it takes, um, Board of Elections three months to run an election, that would. if it's a seven month and it takes, um, Board of Elections three months to run an election, that might potentially like, uh, get set that scenario where they're bumping from one election to the other. So some of the worry might have to be fixed and edited and maybe the Board of Elections could help on that. Because the last thing I need is like in six months to have two elections, uh, one special election and one election, when the person might serve for like three months and, or four months, if it's like the seven or eight months. So let's get to the Board of Elections, figure out how, what recommendation to do, what's doable for them and what scenarios they could bring back to us so that we work for them and it, and it works for council. And realistically being down without having to have one council member, being not responsible for the full entire war and, and pulling, um, extra help from somebody else. And the scenario of like tying, um, and stuff like that, yeah, that's a very real scenario. There's times where we don't always see eye to eye to pass the next item. And we tried to work it there, but definitely the, the process makes it a little longer.
So I'm, I'm going to push back a little bit.
Go ahead, Jimmy, you have the floor.
Sure, I, I think there's always obstacles about why we don't have democracy. And there could be three vacancies, there could be four vacancies. I mean, you know, I mean, reality is other cities have this process that's unacceptable for us not to have a process where people have a right to choose their councilperson. You know, whether it's six months, nine months, I think, you know, the Board of Elections can look through this, but it's a policy decision, as a decision is, should people in a council be able to elect the person they want over, at a period of time? And, uh, you know, I understand one ward has a lot of work and two wards, but I think the more important overriding thing is the issue about democracy and the issue of people electing their person. So, uh, I would strongly, you know, I mean, we can ask the Board of Elections to do it, but I think it's a question of fundamentally that, and because I deal with this in the General Assembly a lot, where, you know, people, you know, get appointed and, you know, and, and, you know, including myself, I mean, it's not, it wasn't appropriate to be appointed for a two-year session. So, uh, I, I, you know, I, I feel strongly that, you know, the mo- democratic aspect overrides some of the kind of technical problems that could occur and that we should definitely move forward to, you know, kind of having an election if it's, you know, if there's a vacancy for more than six months, even if we have to have two elections. I mean, you know, democracy and people, you know, electing are important, is important, more important than some of the, uh, technicals. And if we have three vacancies, we have three elections, you know, I mean, you know, I mean.
So who's going to run the city while we have those three vacancies, Jimmy?
Well, I mean, I mean, that's, that's, that's what democracy, you know, that's what we do in democracy, you know, we, we have a, we have a crisis and we, we have a, I mean, what do you do now? I mean, I mean, it takes a while to have an appointment and recommendation and getting approval. I mean, that takes two months anyway. Uh, I mean, it's not like, you know, if there's a vacancy, somebody's appointed the next day. You know, that takes two months. I mean, the time it took to, you know, get an appointment, you could also have an election. I just think that at some point, you know, having, uh, democratic decision-making is more important than some of the kind of procedural things, uh, obstacle, that's, that's how I feel.
Jimmy, I'm going to.
So I don't mind bringing it to the Board of Elections, but I, I do want to, uh, move this ahead and try and, you know, you know, get some kind of special election done here. Even if it's voted on the, uh, legislature, it gets voted down.
So Jimmy, the, usually the procedure works is for us to take it to our advisory boards. So Board of Elections would like to give it, need to, it needs to go to Board of Elections, so it could give us a recommendation.
It, it doesn't need to go to the Board of Elections.
Jimmy, I have the floor. You can have the floor, pick the one after, but I have the floor right now. Procedure was they need to do it because they're the body that is able to do the work for us and realistically they could tell us what is possible or not. So I have not heard one council member saying here that they're not open to have a special election. So you're bringing up the fact that it's not democratic and, you know, we're doing this. Nobody said they don't want a special election. What we're saying is like we would like recommendation for Board of Elections to figure out what is possible, what is doable, in order for us to move forward before we start drawing lines here. Yeah, we could legislate seven, thirty days, we need to have a new person. But realistically, based on the rules of the Board of the Elections, it might not be feasible. And they are the board that study the election procedures for the city and they know what is it that they need to be able to carry the steps. So I need to make sure that you are hearing what the, what everybody else is saying. Everybody's saying, let's take it to the Board of Elections so that way they could give us feedback on what do they see, uh, doable to be able to do that is under guideline and procedures. But I'll tell you this, having an election in thirty days, I already know that's not doable. And not even workforce, you have a hundred people, but according to the rules, you need to be able to call election a certain time and you need to be able to allow whoever candidate is to be able to submit their documents within certain, um, certain time from the election. So the Board of Elections should be able to tell us specifically what those numbers are and what do they recommend. Uh, I think that's very important. I think Jared's question is definitely definitive when it comes to, you know, what does that means as a city when it comes to moving forward? If we do have this a one case scenario before three, that's something that we also analyze. So bottom line is like people are open to the special election, we just want to make sure we get recommendations and make sure we look at all the aspects to, to carry on. It's not just a matter of policy. It's a matter of all's doing our, our due diligence to make sure the advisory board for the elections is also, um, has an opinion and is able to walk us through, um, what else we could do to make sure this happens. So this is the second round, so I'm going to go ahead and open to Jared and, uh, Luke. Go ahead.
Yeah, this is Jared. Yeah, I just want to, want to reaffirm that I, you know, my like process concerns are in no way about whether we should do this or not. It's just to make sure that we don't inadvertently create a possible, uh, scenario that we can't, that, you know, because of one resignation, two resignations at the same time, we can't, we can't navigate ourselves back out of under the charter. So that, that's my, that's my only concern. But, I mean, I want to reaffirm that I fundamentally think it's really important to have the opportunity for folks to, um, you know, to, to, when there's a vacancy for folks to be able to elect. I, uh, you know, we have a, we have a, um, you know, appointment process that, uh, you know, as, as I said, a two-year, two years is really long. Hyattsville and other neighboring cities do, um, you know, have, have a s- have a process, have a situation that works, we've seen it works. I really want us to see us, um, implement the same. Um, you know, I, I, I know there's concerns about people stepping up. I would actually postulate that, you know, our, I mean, one of the challenges about getting folks to run in this city is the length of our terms because they are long. They are a really long commitment. Um, I understand that two years can be really short. It feels like, you know, Brentwood and Chevrolet are constantly up for reelection, but at the same time, uh, you know, folks can step up and a lot of folks have stepped up because the term, the term is more manageable. And I actually think, you know, I mean, we may get more takers for two, you know, for, if there's a vacancy for a two-year term, uh, than we would, than we would otherwise. So I, anyways, I, I, I just again, want to reaffirm, I think what Jimmy is saying, the purpose of what we're doing for this is really important. I want to, and I want to say that that proposal has, a proposal to make sure we have a elective process to fill a vacancy has my full support. Thank you.
Thank you, Jared. Luke, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say that, you know, it's a, it presents as a false choice to say that, you know, more democracy or less democracy, that's not really the question. The question is what's the most effective democracy? So I think everybody thinks that appointing somebody for two years is not the most effective democracy and that there's a way you can do that better. Um, and so I think that's why, you know, that's why I'm supportive of, of that option one. I think there becomes the question though, that's one end of the spectrum about, okay, how do you do that? Um, and, you know, if you say, um, well, if it's within a certain amount of time, it's just going to stay vacant, well, okay, there are issues with that. You know, maybe budget amendments can't get passed and I've been on council and had to make budget amendments pass quickly in order to have air conditioning for police officers during the heat of the summer or heat for police officers because the heat has gone. And so is it effective democracy to not be able to pass those budget amendments, um, in those times? Um, you know, I would say probably not. You probably want to have a system built in and the the benefit of being able to get stuff done outweighs a six-month waiting period until the election or a three-month waiting period until the election, the next election. That's not depriving somebody of democracy, that's effective democracy, ensuring that they get the services that they're paying in their taxes. Um, and so I just don't want to present people with a false choice of democracy or no democracy. It's what is the most effective democracy? And you have to balance having an elections and the amount of money and time and energy that takes with, um, having people who can set policy and make budget amendments so that people get the services that they expect. Um, and so I just think that's the issue and that's, I'll leave it there. Thank you. And so that's why I just think it's important to get the Board of Elections input because they're the ones who have to do it. And I'm sure they would be supportive of, of this. We just, I think it would be helpful if we got their input. Thank you.
Uh, and I'm up here, I just closed my laptop. I usually, I'm working on two different systems. It's showing like I was gone, but I'm comfortable. But I'm still here. Um, okay, so, uh, where, where are we? Okay, so that was the second round, uh, second half round. Um, so yeah, so, uh, you know, I think it seems like we're all a little bit to send this to the Board of Elections for them to like digest in their next meeting and give us a recommendation. Um, I explained to you earlier, so this is a charter amendment. Charter amendments take a little bit longer because it goes from one work session to legislative session, they usually make a couple stops because you're in itself changing the constitution of, um, of a reindeer. So you need to make sure that is, um, that is noted, okay? Uh, saying that, if, um, maybe not if you guys want to go on to another round, if not, I'm ready to go on to the next item. Okay, hearing none. Oh man, and this is why I keep my other laptop open. All right, so we reviewed the calendar and I'm assuming adjournment is the next step or am I missing something? If adjournment is the next step, can we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We have a motion on the floor, any seconds?
Seconded.
The motion has moved, moved in second, any objections? Hearing none, um, this meeting has been adjourned. Thank you for having a great meeting. It is ten seventeen for its very impacted long meeting. We, we survived, um, in, in a very good timing, so. Thank you guys and we'll be continuing to communicate via email. All right, and I'll see you guys very soon. Jared, I'll see you tomorrow morning.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
All right.
Bye everyone.
Thanks everyone, bye everyone.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.